It's gonna be a great weekend. Uh, it's called order. City Clerk, roll call.
We have some member agency director, Mr. Chris.
Present.
Man?
Present.
Marcus here. Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith. Mayor Chairman Harris?
Here. Thank you. Uh, the invocation will be brought to us by Reverend Maxine Schultz from the Hailing Heights Church.
With this heavy an agenda as we have tonight, let's just take a moment to go within and make ours get in touch with the peace and the calm of the spirit within. And we know that as we sit here tonight, we're brought together for the best interest of Lancaster city. We are guided by the truth of spirit, higher power, God, whatever deity you choose to call him. We know that we are protected by that power, that it is the guiding force in our life in all decisions, which means that we need to take a moment before we make any decision, collectively or singularly, to go within and listen to the guidance from within. I'm assured that that power is always active, always abundant and present, guiding us to exactly the place we need to be for the highest good for all concerned. Thank you, Spirit. Amen.
Thank you very much. Oh, Mr. Christian, will you wave this flag, sir?
Please stand and place your hand over your heart and repeat after me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. Our student speaker tonight is Daniel Torino from Westwood Elementary School. Is Daniel here? Hey, there you are. Come on up.[215.29][215.29](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Hello. Hello. My name is Daniel Torino, and today my subject is Days of Infamy. Some of those present here today can remember the events of December 7, 1941. I was a little too young at the time to remember. Our country was shocked to learn that military forces of Japan had planned a surprise attack on Pearl Harbor, sinking four battleships of our Pacific Fleet. Other ships and planes were destroyed or badly damaged. More than 2,400 of our men were killed, and many others were wounded. In asking Congress for a declaration of war, President Franklin Roosevelt referred to December 7, 1941 as a date that would live in infamy. Time has proven that to be true. September of 2010 marks an anniversary of another day of infamy. September 11, 2001, almost 60 years after the attack on Pearl Harbor, is a date that many of us remember vividly. We are not likely to forget the images on our television screens as we saw jetliners crash into the towers of the World Trade Center, causing destruction to those great buildings, killing even more people than the attack on Pearl Harbor. Americans have always taken pride in the fact that ours is a peace-loving nation. When we fight, it is for defensive purposes, never because we want to hurt people. It is hard to understand why anyone would want to hurt us. Surely times have changed for all of us, but may we take in, but we must take into account the fact that there are evil forces in the world dedicated to our destruction. May we all be determined that we will always be alert and vigilant, never letting our enemies destroy our ways of life. Thank you.[353.65][353.65](APPLAUSE).
Okay. You want to do the Streets of Lancaster video now? Is that the plan?
Um, yes, while they're queuing it up. As the mayor mentioned, Streets of Lancaster is February 8, 9, and 10. Very exciting event. It has a lot of competition in it, as the council well knows, but also for the public, there's a street festival, there's a barbecue competition, there's a car show, and for the public that hasn't been down to the Boulevard, there are a lot of businesses, restaurants, opportunities to get to know what's on the new Boulevard. So with that, we'd like to show you a video of last year that hopefully whets your appetite for this year.
Hi, this is Joe Cabra, Communications Manager for the City of Lancaster, and we're here at the inaugural Streets of Lancaster Grand Prix. Behind me, we have an 800-foot straightaway where these go-karts are going to be going up to 100 miles an hour all weekend. So welcome to the inaugural Streets of Lancaster Grand Prix.
We've got nine different classes, and so they have to qualify all day to decide who gets the fastest time, who gets the pole position for the feature races tomorrow.
The first morning of this gear grinding weekend begins with practice, and lots of it, as this is no regular course.
This is street racing is, uh, is more exciting. You have barriers and hay bales. When you're in the go-kart, you're so low to the ground that you can't see the corners coming up, so it's really, uh, really key that the driver knows the track and knows the lines so that you know what's coming up.
We had a chance to speak with racer Taylor Castle from La Palma, California. He drives for Max Kart Racing in the GT Kart California Edition, number 17 on the track.
You've been out there twice so far this morning.
Yeah, I've been out twice to the track. It's, uh, got a lot of fun, really slippery. It's gonna be a lot of passing, a lot of stuff out here for the fans.
And now, as the day goes on, does it get less slippery or more slippery? How does the strategy change as the heat comes on?
As the heat comes on and the more cars get on the track, uh, more rubber gets laid down by all the karts, and so effectively the track gets grippier and grippier, and so the carts are able to handle better and go faster.
Competitors of all ages and classes race at breakneck speeds through the Streets of Lancaster, making it a spectator sport to remember.
You've got little eight-year-olds here who are manning this track like, they're driving better than I could, and I'm 38-years-old. I've been driving 20 years, and I couldn't do what these kids can do. So it's just really impressive to watch these little guys man the track the way they do and stay on it.
You know, when you see them and you make turn, you kind of get scared, you know, your hands are always shaking, worried about the kids. Um, the adults, uh, it's kind of okay. More concerned about the kids than I am about the adults.
This inaugural event is likely to become an annual attraction, judging by all the spectators who are revving up for the action, and for the racers, it's the fans who add to the ear splitting roar of excitement.
Oh, yeah, it's great to have people out here watching us. It's great for the city, great for all the fans, great for all the karters to get to do a one-off event like this. It's a lot of fun.
Everybody likes street racing. That's, that's thrill. It's different from a track, and it throws a little bit more excitement in it because you make the track.
Making the track, now that's an effort. Thanks go out to every department in the City of Lancaster who helped pull it together. The community's business leaders also pitched in.
Thank God for Hemmy Hay coming up with some hay bales for us, I think about 200. And, uh, Norm Casson and the guys from Tire Store brought about 1,000 tires, uh, so that really helped out, you know, it's a community effort.
Once practice is complete, the real action begins. Hitting speeds of up to 100 miles per hour, kart racers in each class compete in three qualifying rounds.
Now, the qualifying session obviously puts you on the grid, and you want to be towards the front. When you're in the back of qualifying, it's like being in the jungle. You had racks and stuff, so if you, if you qualify in the top three rows, then you have a good shot at winning the main event.
But a lot happens between the qualifying rounds and the finals. We're talking about the VIP celebrity races.
I understand the mayor's gonna be racing this afternoon, and we're looking forward to that.
The VIP celebrity races feature not only Mayor R. X. Paris, but nearly all of the city council. Also in the lineup, a whole slew of drivers representing local businesses that sponsor the event. The first heat is known as the grudge match, with Vice Mayor Ron Smith and City Manager Mark Ozigian teaming up to take on Mayor Paris and Ricky Clutter of Lancaster Honda, the event's major sponsors.
Rick Clutter, that number one machine champion's gonna be starting on the point in car number 20. R. X. Paris is up there in that number two spot in car number 20.
And then they're off and running in the first qualifying heat, when all of a sudden a controversial crash causes a not-so-serious rivalry.
Well, you know, Ricky Clutter, uh, took me off the first, ran into me, my best friend.[703.51][703.51](LAUGHING). You know, I haven't had this much fun in my whole life.[707.23][707.23](LAUGHING).
With the grudge match over, Vice Mayor Ron Smith is left victorious with Mayor Paris in second place.
Now, speaking of conspiracy, how was that, uh, how was the VIP race? Was any conspiracies this time?
No, that was a fair race through and through. The, uh, team of the Vice Mayor and the City Manager did come out victorious.
My strategy was there was about five or six of them in front, just wait till they wipe out.
We headed to the starting line to find out what strategy other VIPs are using.
Take the turn sharp, take them wide when I need to, and just go fast.
What I have to do is I have to protect the inside of the corner this time. Last time I opened it up too much, and that's what allowed Ricky to get in and take me out.
You just gotta stay in control, drive the car, don't let the car drive you.
It's much tougher with other people out there and, and the unexpected turns, even though you do a few pace laps, it's, you just never know what's gonna happen, and this was tough to drive, I thought.
The qualifying heats continue, and the competition grows more fierce.
Well, I'll tell you what, that last race, the top three in each of the heats, I mean, those guys were moving, and they were battling it out, so it changed at the very end. I think Rick Clutter was winning it. And Zach, uh, from Western Pacific, just got him in that last lap, so it was really a great race.
Uh, just got a kind of bad start here, let these other knuckleheads, uh, bump and rub on here, rubbing's racing, let them beat each other up, went around and, uh, with the grace of God, and fast cars was able to come out with a lead.
Zach Zammerslaw is now the official Boulevard Champ, a coveted title that is sure to make next year's VIP race that much more competitive. As for this year, those less fortunate are left to lament on what exactly went wrong.
You know, it was very disappointing, because I thought it ran a good race, but I got in like four, uh, turns that weren't my fault, four accidents.
Okay, now, when you started, were you near the front or back?
I was at the back. That was a mistake. I was nice, I let Sandra personally get in front of me, you know, being chivalrous and all that stuff, never again.
Well, I got out front right away, right? Even though it was just the pacing, but (LAUGHING) I'm just in my groove now, so we need to do this over, don't you think?
When the qualifying heats end, spectators don't go home. Once the karts are put away, the hot rods appear. Only these cars don't race, they cruise.
They're gonna parade from Jet Hawk Stadium, they're gonna cruise, just like the old days, into, uh, the Boulevard, onto the Boulevard, onto the track, led by the, uh, hot rod from LA County Sheriff, and we got classic oldies, all kinds of cars coming in, they're gonna stage right here on the course, and then the Blue Frog Blues are gonna kick it up.
We've got to celebrate downtown going in conjunction with these races. We have food vendors, we have entertainment, we have all kinds of static displays, something for everybody out here.
I'll have to say Downtown Lancaster is really an exciting place now, all kinds of changes, you know, great music, a lot of fun down here, so we're having a good time.
I love it, it's great. I hope they keep this going for years and years.
This'll be a major event, you watch. Next year, we'll probably have twice the people. I think the crowd's enjoying it, everybody's happy, having a good time.
And that'll do it for the inaugural Streets of Lancaster Grand Prix. We've had two great days of racing, a lot of entertainment, and we want you out here next year with us.
Thank you. I'm not gonna say anything.[937.00][937.00](LAUGHING).
We've got to keep the challenge going, Mayor.
We got hats?
Got hats. You know, Ron Smith said, "Steve, if you're bringing pole position hats, you only need to bring one, because the pole position hat goes to the fastest qualifier." And I guess Ron figures it's him, he's not even here tonight, but I have one for each of you, compliments of our primary sponsor, Rick Clutter and Lancaster Honda. I'd like to present them tonight. Sherry, make us proud this year.
Thank you. How's that for product placement? All right. Well, we hope everybody comes, you'll have a great time. We had a great time. Everybody who was there had a great time. This year, it's even better. That's why we made it three days instead of two days. We have the Housing Authority, who do we have from the Housing Authority?
Um, Mr. Jenkins, I believe, is gonna be here. I don't see him yet.
Mr. Jenkins?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did he tell you what he was sending you into?
Yes, he did.[1025.00][1025.00](LAUGHING).
What did he tell you?
And I'm happy to be here. Good evening, council members. Good evening, members of the residents of the City of Lancaster. I'm happy to be here today. My name is Margarita Laris. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Dorian Jenkins. I am the Director of the Assistant Housing Division for the Housing Authority of LA County. And, um, as promised, um, Mr. Jenkins has been submitting a monthly report to your council, um, giving you a status of the program, and I'm here to do the same today as well. This is a report for the activity of the month of August 2010, and as of the first day of August, there were 2,249 active contracts in the City of Lancaster. No change from the previous month, the month of July. Were a total of new, three new contracts processed from new participants. Seven terminations were processed. There were four calls for the fraud hotline, of which two were referred for investigation, and 20 new, 23 new fraud investigations have been opened during the month of August. Additionally, overall performance of the program, we are 100% current in completing annual recertifications, which is continued eligibility of, um, our tenants and participants in the program. We have also completed 100% of annual housing quality standard inspections that are due for the month of September, work completed on time. Uh, the program for the County of Los Angeles is 99% leased up at this time, and we have applications in the pipeline to maintain a 100% lease-up status.
What does that mean?
Um, we have applications that are on hold, so as individuals terminate off the program, we can replace them with those applications that are on hold. At the last meeting, uh, we were asked to provide information regarding the fair market rents and payment standards. At this time, I do not have a report ready for you. Uh, Mr. Jenkins will be providing that to you at a later time.
Are we doing it by zip code?
I'm sorry?
Are we doing it by zip code?
We could, yes, we have information by zip code.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
You know, I had a conversation today in the gym with, with a guy about Section 8, and in talking to him, we had some ideas come up. And one of it is, you know, we really don't have a sufficient amount of statistical data as to the impact of these homes on our neighborhoods. And it seems to me that your agency would be the one most equipped to do those surveys. Any plans, any thoughts? How do we go about, uh, effectuating something like that?
Um, well, of course, we can assist with some data gathering, but I believe that a lot of the data can come from the city. I'm not sure if, for example, you already have in place committees that, um, are gathering, uh, economic information, redevelopment information, uh, crime information, um, market rent information? It's local that we could...
I'm more interested on what the neighbors think.
Okay.
You know, I mean, we're all, we're all assuming that these homes are having a detrimental impact on the, the, uh, the morale of the neighborhood, for lack of a better word, for the character of the neighborhood. And I'm just wondering, why don't we have the courage to examine that and see? You know, it could just be something in our head, or it could be something that's very real and hard to fix, or something very real and easy to fix. And I would like you to go back and ask them if we could work something like that out using Housing Authority funding.
Okay. I will. Thank you.
I mean, let's get some real information. You up for that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Any items to be removed from the agency consent calendar?
No, sir.
Mayor, Mayor Paris, for the record, do we need to, um, vote on excuse for Mayor, Vice Mayor Ron Smith?
Is there a motion?
I'll move that we excuse Vice Mayor Ron Smith from the...
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Let's vote. Thank you, Mr. Mann, for bringing that to our attention. Um, okay, is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
I need to recuse myself on RCC 1.
Okay.
No, CC 7, I believe.
I, I think you have to state the reason. I mean, oh, I just... I mean, if you have property nearby...
Yes, I have property near it.
Okay, good, thank you. You don't want to read tomorrow that you didn't state it? Okay, let's do it again. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve RCC 1, consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Uh, it's unanimous with Marvin Chris, uh, recusing himself and Ronald Smith not present. Okay, is there, is there a motion to approve the minutes? I can't vote on that, I wasn't here.
I'll move that we approve the minutes from September 14, 2010.
I'll second.
Go ahead and vote. I'm not voting. Okay, it's unanimous. Anything on the council consent calendar to be removed?
No, sir.
Is there a motion?
Move we approve the consent calendar as comprised.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Um, we have some cards. We might have some cards.
Do you have any cards?
Not on...
At least one, huh? Which item?
Everything's on MB1. Let me look again.
The City Clerk can assist for a second if you'd like. CC 7, anything on that?
The, yeah, the card may not have specifically said CC 7, but it talked about the...
All right, let's pull CC 7. Okay.
Circled, not engendized, but we have one speaker.
Okay, let's pull CC 7. Is there a motion on the remaining items on the consent calendar?
S, I'll make the motion as so comprised.
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous, CC 7. Louis Valencia? Good evening.
Good evening, how you doing? Um, I was just basically, short notice, it's written in the paper about this agenda, and, um, I'm actually opposed to leasing, in, in a short word, um, this, this American Heroes Park out to Aver- Averitas, uh, school. Um, I don't think the funds from the actual public should be used to build a park and then sit there and, and lease it out for 10 to 25 years, uh, seven days out of the year from eight, seven days out of the week from, uh, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Um, I think that if you, if you sat there and, and took the time to name this park the American Hero Park, I think you should leave it open to the public for everybody to access this park at all times, not just from 4:00 in the afternoon till, you know, sundown. Um, you also plan on building more and more, uh, senior citizen buildings down Avenue I, up and around this neighborhood. Where do you plan having these people, uh, you know, once they, they start to move in, where do you plan on having them actually take their dogs, which is to them, their loved ones, and walk in the park and stuff? If you already sat there and gave up one-third of the 12 acres to Sacred Heart, and now you plan on giving up another one-third of the actual park to this other school, what's gonna be left for, for the public to, to actually use? And this is money that was actually from, you know, from the public, taken from the public, and, you know, you named the park, it's a great-looking park so far, and it has a great name, but for you to sit there and, and do a lease out to a school doesn't make sense, I, me personally, you know? Um, and think about it, if you can't attend a park from 8:00 to 4:00 o'clock, because you got post signs throughout the whole park that it's gonna be closed, or restricted use from 8:00 to 4:00 specifically for people, I don't think it makes sense, you know? Um, we've been spending a lot of money, uh, public money on buying all these redevelopment homes and all this stuff, and Obama's money, and this is part of it, and, you know, for you to sit there and have a contract and sit there and bind it like that doesn't, to me, I'm opposed to that. Um, I'd like you to consider that, and I'd like for you guys to look further into maybe another alternative. You also plan, if you do lease it out, you plan on sitting there and, in a sense, leasing the park back, um, per, per request, uh, you know, $125 an hour, et cetera, et cetera, per use on weekends. Um, well, if I read the paper correctly, what it states on there...
No, you're, you're, we, we can rent the, uh, the auditorium for city events...
Okay.
...by the hour for that amount.
But why? Okay, that's fine too, but to me, it doesn't make sense if it's already, the money's already been allocated to build this park, why not continue just leaving it for, hoping for, for the public use instead of having to pay them back, you know, on a lease that roughly, it's only gonna be roughly $2,000 for them to sit there and, out of annual costs.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Reed, do we have any census on how many people use the park between 8:00 and 4:00?
I can just tell you from experience, most of the parks are pretty wide open at that time.
What does that mean?
If you looked at City Park, probably our busiest park, there are people using the playground, but the vast part of the park, the open turf areas and so forth, softball fields, are virtually vacant. Um, later in the afternoon, evenings, that's when programming starts, people off work, kids are out of school, so they end up using the parks. We also have Jane Reynolds Park, not very far from American Heroes Park, uh, less than a half mile, and so that also provides an opportunity for them. But this park won't be used entirely by the two schools. There'll be other parts of the park that are available for the public during the day and during other hours.
I, I got a sense from the article in the paper that the third that's going to the Seventh-day Adventist is the children's play area?
They're probably looking a little more at the open turf areas, softball fields, but, you know, frankly, Seventh-day Adventist School is in a pretty good position. They built themselves a gymnasium, uh, they have a little turf area too. So we've talked a little to them, and if I can refer to some information we've received from them, they're looking at using the park... looking at using the park during that five-hour period, there'd be about four different classrooms. There're probably somewhere between 25 and 35 children per classroom. They'll use a park for about 20 minutes at a time for recess each morning, totaling about one and a half hours total. And then they also intend to use it for lunch break, about a half hour, and then for PE in the afternoon for about 45 minutes. If they use it for anything in addition to that, such as sports activities, if they had a league play or something, they would rent the park just like they currently do. They've used Lancaster City Park, they pay a fee for that when they use it, and they're paying a fee for this. In addition, they also do have the gymnasium, which has some very valued use for the city that we could use for our youth programs, and they're willing to allow us to use that, deducting whatever we use those hours from their rent for use of the park.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? No, I'm sorry, that's not how it works. Sorry.
Mayor Paris, I just wanted to mention that I was glad to see that the, both schools stayed down in the, in the downtown areas, and that it, it is taxpayers' monies, and I think it is taxpayers' monies that's being very well spent, and that the park is open during the day, certain areas of the park. So, I'm, I'm just glad they're there.
Anything else? Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve CC 7.
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, we have Continued Public Hearing Item Number One. It was continued from the meeting of September 14th, 2010. It remains, so the hearing remains open. We'll now hear a report from Brian Ludke.
Mayor Paris and members of the city council, what's before you tonight is a introduction of an ordinance to approve Zone Change Number 10-01. What this ordinance would do is apply the Senior Mobile Home Park Overlay Zone to three existing mobile home park properties located in the city. Back in 2008, the city council adopted an ordinance change into the city's zoning code that allowed for the designation of senior mobile home parks. Those were based upon occupancy levels in which 80% or more of the spaces within a park were occupied by at least one resident age 55 or over. By the city's ordinance, meeting this criteria automatically designates that park as a senior mobile home park. Under the terms of the ordinance, either the city or the individual owner of that mobile home park can apply for the senior overlay designation to be placed on the zoning map. In this particular case, the city is acting and initiating the effort to designate three existing mobile home parks with this overlay zone. These include the Clear Skies Mobile Home Park at 1304 East Avenue I, the Californian Mobile Home Park at 2550 East Avenue I, and the Sherwood Mobile Home Park at 3753 Avenue, East Avenue I. Based on the city's review of the rental documents and operating rules in these parks, we believe that all three of them do in fact qualify as senior mobile home parks. The Planning Commission reviewed this particular item back in its meeting of August 16th. It voted 5-0 to recommend to you the adoption of the mobile home park designation for seniors on these particular properties. At your last meeting, information was submitted to you indicating that there may be some issue with whether or not the city's code violates relevant fair housing laws. The city attorney, David McEwen, has looked at this particular information, and he does have for you a report back on whether or not the city's ordinance is in fact in compliance with the relevant sections. We have recommended to you approval of this particular ordinance, and we feel that it is in fact in compliance with the intent of the city council as adopted in 2008.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Yes, David?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. At our last meeting, we did receive a very substantial package of material, some 55 pages worth, to review, and at that time I had asked for a continuance of the consideration so we could consider that information. We've completed a review of that information and discovered that there is only one new case cited in all of that material that had, that we had not previously addressed in a very lengthy analysis of a previous submission from another attorney citing almost, in fact, almost word for word, the various arguments. We concluded in 2008 that our ordinance was in compliance with all of the federal laws. And let me address real briefly the, the one case that they, they added to that, and that was a case involving the city of Ansonia, where the city provided a notice to the developer of approximately 16 homes that they could not lease or sell or rent those homes to persons or families with children, and that it was subject to a particular city ordinance. Subsequently discovered that, that ordinance didn't exist. And so, as a result, the city entered into a settlement agreement with HUD to, where they agreed not to adopt such an ordinance. The case doesn't reach the substance of whether a city has the right to adopt an ordinance, a zoning ordinance, that restricts a certain area to senior housing. In fact, under California law, there are specific code sections that specifically authorize us to designate areas in mobile home parks, or designate mobile home parks as senior mobile home parks. And so, it's still my opinion that the analysis we did in 2007, 2008, that led up to the adoption of the original ordinance is still sound, and that there is no federal prohibition against adopting the ordinance before you tonight.
Thank you. David Evans?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is David Evans. I'm with the Western Manufactured Housing Communities Association. That's a statewide association of mobile home park owners, and I'm there, I'm here in behalf of our members in Lancaster. After reviewing the material from the city and having a lengthy conversation with Sherwood's attorney, it's obvious that there's just a difference of opinion as to whether this
Wait a minute, before you go on, do we have any mobile home manufacturers in Lancaster?
No, not, it's the Western Manufactured Housing Communities, so we represent mobile home parks.
I see, okay.
Yeah. There's a difference of opinion as to whether this ordinance will stand legal muster. In my, as you might imagine, in my conversation with the, with the park's attorney, their arguments are very compelling. I'm not an attorney, so I'm not here to debate the legalities of it, but I did make some notes from my conversation with Sherwood's attorney, and that I'm authorized, and I'll read those to you. Now, it says, "In order to qualify for the defense of housing for older persons, the operator must prove and produce the three elements of the defense. One, percent occupancy, one person 55 years or older in 80% of the units, from the effective date of the Fair Housing Act amendments. Two, intent to operate as housing for persons who are 55 years of age or older. Three, verification of occupancy compliance beginning 180 days after the HUD rules in 1999, and updated every two years as required under the Housing for Older Persons Act. The city's ordinance addresses occupancy only, which is insufficient for the operator to qualify as housing for older persons under the Federal Fair Housing Act and the Housing for Older Persons Act. The city is under color of state law zoning, at least on unqualified parks as housing for older persons. This is a violation of the Federal Fair Housing Act for which the city will be liable." I don't know if, if, has the city attorney had a conversation with Dave Sabangenberg, the attorney for Sherwood?
Yes.
Oh, you have, how long ago was that?
Two years.
Okay, all right. You know, I, I would like to see another conversation happen, because it's been two years, and there's been more water under the bridge. Their arguments are very compelling, and I know I represent park owners, so you would expect me to say that, but I think a conversation would be worth everybody's while, so that everybody feel, feels comfortable moving ahead with the legality of the ordinance. So with that, I'll just state that we're opposed to, to the ordinance, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Chivara? Gee, Ray, do you have an opinion about this?
Mr. Mayor, welcome back.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, members of the audience.
Everybody shares that opinion.
Well, you and I kind of go way back. Thanks to your mom here.
Oh, hi, Mom. I didn't even see you there.
I, I'm here representing the Board of Directors of the Sherwood Park Association of Residents, our homeowners association, so to speak. We want to thank you for the great hope that this council and previous councils gave us as older persons in this type of affordable housing stock in this city. Three years ago, you, the council adopted a moratorium, then a subsequent ordinance, then another one, and now you're at number 952. We hope that you support your planning commission decision on this issue. Quite frankly, we, I hope Ken Mann doesn't take somewhat in front of this, but we, he and I chuckled at the fact that, you know, we're getting pretty old, and one of these days, we all will cash in our chips, and the compromise that we thought was effectuated through Mrs. Prubaker's letter seemed to allow that those younger people under 55 who moved into the park to fill up empty spaces, with or without families, will be there long after we're gone. And ostensibly, the compromise seemed to be that if, when they leave, a 55 and older has to come in, it'll be too late for us to see your ordinance enforced at that time. I, I would hope it's enforced as soon as possible. I know you like to entertain lawsuits, Mr. Mayor, this is what we welcome. Thank you, sir.
You know, if, if it's good enough to vote for, it's good enough to fight for, you think? All right. Any questions, any discussion? I'm of the opinion that older people ought to be able to live in a mobile home park at peace and at rest, without a bunch of kids disturbing their solitude, for what it's worth. And yes, Mr. Chivara, if it's another lawsuit, it's another lawsuit. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Oh, I gotta close the public hearing? It's closed.
I'll make the, the motion that we introduce ordinance number 952 approving Zone Change Number 10-01 proudly.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Of course, Ray, I might have a. I, I might have had a conflict, because now I'm one of those old people.
Did you check with Dave to see if you could vote on that?
You know, it's hard for me to get used to. I, I just don't feel this old. Okay, moving on.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to do CA 1 first before we went to?
What's CA 1?
Nomination.
Why isn't that on my script? Oh, I see, it's out of order, okay. Yes, let's do that. No, wait a minute, I think we do the new business item first, then we'll do the council agenda.
This is going to take so long, I thought we'd get those people out.
Oh, you want to just get it out of the way?
Right, yeah.
I see, okay. So you want to take it out of order?
Correct.
Yes, okay, good. We can vote on these tonight, right?
Do, do we need to make notice that we want to take them out of order, Mr. McEwen? And go to council?
It's mayor's prerogative to take things in any order he chooses.
And yes, you can nominate and vote on these tonight. Okay, rather than read the, everybody, the agenda's been made available to everybody. Rather than read the list, those are my nominations for the Museum Art Gallery Foundation, and I'd like a motion and a second appointing them.
I'll make the motion to approve the list as currently comprised.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's vote. And, Mr. Rozigie, and I would direct you to tell them to select their chairman, to select, to give me a, a recommendation for the chairman and the vice chairman, and I'll appoint those at the next meeting. Okay? Thank you. Do we want, now go to new business one?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. McEwen, new business item one.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you a proposed urgency ordinance, which would amend Section 9.18.010 of the Lancaster Municipal Code to essentially expand the scope of that section to prohibit members of a criminal street gang from attending or being physically present at a city event with the intent of publicizing criminal street gang dominance over the territory in an effort to control it and to keep others out, or to conceal ongoing criminal activity. There's, there's been a lot of conversation about the constitutionality of that. There have been a number of cases, Supreme Court cases and others, in which attempts to regulate conduct like that have been stricken because they were overly vague. We've looked at those cases. Those cases deal a lot with wearing gang colors, that type of thing, being nonspecific as to what a gang member is, prohibiting merely standing on the sidewalk without any other intent. So, we've carefully drafted the sections so that we are focused on not, not them just being present, but being there with the intent to do certain illegal things. And, and I think that will pass constitutional muster. I would, I would also point out that the California Penal Code defines criminal street gang in some, somewhat of a very detailed manner, and if I can find that code section, I will address it. The, and it, it's an organization of three or more people, whether formal or informal, having as one of its primary activities the commission of one or more criminal acts enumerated in Sections 1.1 through 25 and 31 through 33 of Section 186.22E. And those, there's a long laundry list of various felony-type crimes against both people and property that would qualify for that. And so, in order to be subject to our ordinance, they would have to be a member of a street gang which qualified under that code section.
Well, give me some examples of what behavior qualifies a group to be designated a street gang?
Yeah, burglary, rape, looting, kidnapping, mayhem, aggravated mayhem, assault, possession of firearms, possession of drugs.
So this ordinance is, is directed at groups that gauge, engage in a pattern and consistent course of conduct, as you just described, right?
Correct.
It wouldn't apply to anyone else?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, any questions?
Does it apply to groups that are flying their colors? Just flying their colors?
No. Just, just flying their colors? No, they have to be there with the intent to, and there are some legal terms used here, but basically with the intent to intimidate other members of the public to not be there, or to cover up other criminal activity that they might be engaged in.
If you have members of the Harley Owners Group, the Hogs, and they were there, it's not a street gang, they're flying their colors, they're flying. not a street gang, they're flying their colors, they're fine.
They're fine.
Anyone else? Okay. Okay, Norman Fernandez.
Good evening. My name is Attorney Norman Gregory Fernandez. I'm a nationally-known motorcycle accident attorney and bikers' rights attorney. I'd like to address you here today regarding this particular ordinance. Counsel for the city, I respectfully disagree with your assertion that this ordinance is constitutional. In fact, it is unconstitutional. To pass constitutional muster, this—
Excuse me, which one of those groups are you advocating for?
Well, you know—
Rapists, the murderers, the drug dealers?
No, no, I represent—
Which group are you friends with?
Motorcycle club members, and I think that's out of line, Mayor, to be quite frank.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. It's not out of line—
It's my three minutes, I speak.
And I'll give you another three minutes.
Okay, appreciate that.
But we were very clear that this ordinance is directed at that group, those groups that engage in a consistent pattern of robbery, rape, murder, extortion, mayhem, and the list goes on.
True.
And now there's an attempt by—and quite frankly, you're framing it very well—to come up and act like it's every motorcycle group. And nobody's even said motorcycle group. What we've said is that there are certain organizations that do have a history of terrorizing our communities with that type of behavior, and you seem to be either supporting them or somebody else the ordinance doesn't apply to, and I'd like some clarification.
Well, the clarification is this, Mayor. I support liberty and justice for all, due process for all, equal protection for all.[715.62][715.62](applause)
Let's be clear, Mr. Fernandez, I do not support liberty and justice for rapists, murderers, drug dealers, extortionists, and thieves. I do not support equal justice for them.
So you don't support due process in the Constitution, Mayor?
I want them out of my community, along with everyone else in this community.
Well, unfortunately for you, the U.S. Constitution says otherwise, because everybody in this country—
Rapist, murderer, extortionist, drug dealer, organized criminal, in the Constitution. I don't see that mentioned anywhere.
You are an attorney—
That's right.
And my cousin, Arnie Schwartz, worked with you on many cases, and I know you purport to—you know, you have advertisements supporting workers' rights and so forth. Well, I'm here supporting, you know, motorcyclists' rights. And the bottom line is this—
Wait, where does this say motorcycle?
Well, what's really gonna happen—
Where do we say motorcycle?
What's really gonna happen is you're—you're—this ordinance is gonna give unfettered discretion to law enforcement to say, hey, this person's a member of a gang, and to sue them however they want. That's what's really gonna happen.[774.12][774.12](applause) Now, I know—I know this is a conservative city, and you probably have already made your minds up with this, and we'll see you in federal court—
Even liberal cities don't like—
But I wanna put this on the record. This is unconstitutional. In order to be constitutional, this must pass strict scrutiny, and must be narrowly tailored to meet a compelling governmental interest. Problem is, this is unduly vague, it's over broad, and it will give unfettered discretion to law enforcement. Bottom line, I want to be able to wear whatever I want to wear and ride through the city of Lancaster, so long as I'm not a criminal and not breaking the law, you know? And what you're doing here, there's a lot of people here exercising their right to freedom of speech by wearing colors. Unfortunately, you know, there was an incident a couple weeks ago where some of these members lawfully went to one of your street festivals, and they were told by the sheriff to leave for no other reason but what they had on their back patch. There were no other reason, they weren't doing any crimes or nothing like that. This is America, people have the right to dress and do whatever they want to do, as long as they're not breaking the law. Now, what about—you have an African-American with baggy pants, law enforcement gonna say, oh, he looks like a gang member, you can't come in? Where is his constitutional rights? Or how about a Latino kid?[847.41][847.41](applause) How about a Latino kid that shaves his head, he looks like a gang member, oh, you can't come in? What are you— you're enacting a dress code basically for the city.
You show me in the ordinance where it says anything like that. You're just pulling this stuff out of your ear, and you know it. The ordinance doesn't say anything like that, doesn't it? I want this room cleared if they can't keep quiet.
Please—
Do you understand me?
Please, this is important. All kidding aside, I mean, what the ordinance says and the reality of what you're trying to do here is two different things. What you're trying to do is usurp people's constitutional rights, and these people have a right to due process, and they have a right to, you know, have an opportunity to be heard. Now, you need to adjudicate these people to be gang members before you can exclude them, but you and I both know you're just gonna willy-nilly pick people out and exclude them from public events. You may even try to prevent them from riding on public streets by saying, oh, well, this is a public event here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.[907.41][907.41](applause)
I'm getting the lawyers out of the way. Joseph Lester. Come on down, let's have some fun.
I'm a real part of the fun, actually.
Okay, good.
These guys know that, actually. My name's Joseph Lester, I'm an attorney. I represent the National Coalition of Motorcyclists, the Confederation of Clubs, and quite a number of other motorcycle groups across the country, so if you want to know who I represent, that's them, many of who are citizens in Lancaster, many who come and visit Lancaster. The ordinance you guys are proposing gives far too much leeway to law enforcement to pick and choose who they want to designate as a gang, who they want to choose. They want to choose by the way they look, because they don't like them, maybe they don't get along with them, but that's not the reason you choose who can come to events, who can't come to events. Wait until they do something wrong. If they break the law, arrest them. You arrest these guys, hey, I'm all for that, I make money off of that. You know, they'll have to come pay me money, they'll tell ya. They'll tell ya. Joey may be easy, but he's not cheap.
The fact that they will tell me is precisely why we're here, isn't it?
No, it's not. Precisely why we're here is because the Constitution protects their right to freedom of speech, to freedom of association, and they're not a gang. Trouble is, you want to have law enforcement pick and choose who is designated a gang, who can come to these events.
What we're really talking about tonight is the Vagos, right?
No, I represent the Confederation of Clubs, which is the Vagos, the Soldiers for Jesus, the CMA, the Vietnam Vets Motorcycle Club, the Legacy Vets Motorcycle Club, the Marines MC, veterans who have protected your right to be here to talk. You want to arrest them for being a gang and not let them—
Has somebody—from them been arrested? Has somebody from—
But why should they have a fear of that? Why should they have a fear of that when you have an open ambiguous law that doesn't state that they're doing anything wrong? It just states that, well, we feel that they're claiming territory. And how do you claim territory, then? Because they have the name of a state on their back? Because they have the name of a city on their back?
Okay.
Is that claiming territory?
I don't doubt that this is a difficult issue to contend with. It's very difficult. Because it's difficult doesn't mean we shouldn't try. Also, I would be a lot more sympathetic to especially the attorneys coming up here, if they were coming up with alternative measures that might be less intrusive but also protect the hard-working families of this community. And everybody in this room knows that when certain motorcycle clubs with their colors come into a family event, people become frightened, and I don't think it's appropriate, at least in our city, that we allow that to continue. People have a right to go to community events without being so frightened they leave. Now, if these folks wanted to come wearing their T-shirts, like some of them have today, there wouldn't be any complaint at all. But when a motorcycle club that has been designated by the FBI, the ATF, California Highway Patrol, and the Attorney General's Office as being a criminal outlaw gang that is dangerous, then it is my obligation to protect this community. What I would really prefer is that instead of grandstanding, you came up with an alternative. How do we do something so that the families feel safe, and yet the folks that are here that are law-abiding, that are in these clubs, can come and enjoy the events without frightening people? Now, if the goal is to come into the city—
Why I get to say this is my three minutes, when I get to—
And I'll give you another three, if you'd like.
Thank you, thank you.
If the goal is to come and enjoy the— Who are you turning your back on?
Well, you're taking up my time because you want to grandstand right now. This is what you're doing. You're grandstanding, you let me have my three minutes, and then you respond to me.
What I'm hoping we can do—
Let me finish what I'm saying, instead of you interrupting me.
I will give you another three minutes.
I wanted this three minutes. I didn't want you to take my time to say what you want, let me say what I'm gonna say first, and then you respond to me.
Okay, well, say something constructive, give me an alternative.
I have said something constructive.
Give me an alternative.
You—obviously, which one thing, you said you're not targeting motorcycle clubs, but you just named the Vagos.
Well, yeah, I've got a list—
You just sat there and named them.
I've got a list of all these terrible things that have been alleged against this particular group.
Alleged, alleged, again, alleged.
And what I'm saying is, don't come into our city and scare the families that come out for our events that want to have a great time. Let's figure out a way for you to attend without frightening them. But if the goal is to come and frighten them—
Somebody has been intimidated to come to these events.
Turn around, because we are not going to be frightened by you, we are not going to be scared by you. Turn around. If I have to have 60 of them in a meeting, I will. But if you want to come and enjoy what the city has to offer and do it in a way that doesn't scare people, why don't we try to figure that out? Why don't we try to figure a way to do that out?
But my opinion, where is the proof that the Vagos have scared anybody? Where is the proof that they've intimidated anybody, any private citizens or families?
I can testify, when I walk down the boulevard and see a group of Vagos, I am frightened, okay?
Well, I apologize for that, you know, but you know what? If you walk down the street and you see a group of Nazis, you'd probably be frightened, right?
I am, absolutely.
But you know what? I don't agree with the Nazis, but they have a right to be there.
Well, that's where we differ.
Well, I guess so. You differ on the U.S. Constitution. Well, the Constitution is there to protect people.
Yeah, it's been argued a lot by a lot of people. It's not something in stone, is it?
No, it's something—fortunately, it's something that changes and massages with society and changes and things, but you know what?
You've got your three minutes, I'll shut up now, okay?
Well, thank you.
Okay.
I appreciate that. Anyway, what I'm saying is this, is that we've won a number of cases also where you've tried to regulate—different government entities have tried to regulate dress attire into places of these same clubs, and they had to back down because, again, the U.S. Constitution protects the private citizens of this country from the government intruding on their right to expression and freedom of speech and freedom of association. And to not let them wear their patch, their thing that expresses who they are, is violating what America is. If they do something wrong, arrest them. If they're really intimidating somebody, arrest them. If they're really breaking the law, arrest them. But if they're not, if they're just expressing themselves, they're just having a good time at an event, no matter what they're wearing, they shouldn't be exercised from that event, ostracized from that event. It has a chilling effect on people that want to be a member of that group. Who are you to say that that group can't be a group? Who are you to say that they're a gang? And why you give law enforcement unfettered authority to pick and choose? The next thing, it'll be the Soldiers for Jesus, maybe the CMA or the Legacy Vets.
Give me an alternative. Give me something, a compromise, that is closer to where you want to be, because that's really what legislation is about.
When they break the law, then take them away, arrest them. If they're breaking the law, don't let them into the event, then take them out of the event. If they're not doing anything but having a good time, why are you gonna violate their rights?
Thank you.
Do I still have my time? I don't know. Anyway, we've won a number of cases. You are very free, being a lawyer, probably so, with litigation. Well, that costs taxpayers money. You guys are gonna waste taxpayers' money on litigation, that thing that's going to be overturned. We are gonna fight this, clubs all across the country will fight this, because they don't want their rights taken away. If you take away the rights of the Nazis to organize, well, then the next thing, you take the rights of the Christians to organize. These guys, all they want to do is ride their motorcycles in a group of brotherhood and camaraderie and just have a good time. If they break the law, throw them out. If they break the law, arrest them. But don't give the authority to law enforcement to pick and choose who they don't like. You're trying to make what we call Steadford America, you want everybody to be the same and say, yes, 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 yes.
Oh, please.
Make all those square pegs into rounds, so you can fit them into the holes. These guys don't fit in your holes, they don't look the same. It's easy to pick on them because they stick out. But this is America, isn't that what it's about? Being able to be who you are? Express yourself who you want to be expressing? You're gonna violate America for that? Wait until they break the law. Don't violate their rights. Thank you.
Thank you.[1447.74][1447.74](applause) Mr. Mayor? Yes?
Let me just make an observation about this.
Sure.
We've heard about a lot of, you know, peace-loving people who want to come to town and enjoy themselves, and that's all great. A precondition of the application of this ordinance is that they be a member of a criminal street gang. That is a collection of three or more people who have engaged in criminal activity, either individually or collectively. If they haven't engaged in any criminal activity, they don't meet the primary threshold of the application of this ordinance. They never—they can't—they can't be hassled, they can't—you know, it just doesn't apply to them. Now, if they are a member of a criminal street gang, meeting the definition of the penal code, then yes, if they're there either with the intent to intimidate and control the territory or to engage in other criminal activity, they're subject to the ordinance. It's that simple. That's not—I mean, he's raising all these great constitutional arguments, but that's what they are, and I agree with all of them. You know, wearing colors is not a criminal offense, and it's an expression—you know, you might have bad taste in clothes, but it's still an expression, and they have the freedom to wear what they want.
David, I really don't think you should be talking about people's taste in clothes.[1545.74][1545.74](laughter)
Touche.
Please, please, it is a meeting. Yeah, he's part of the staff, he's allowed to do that.
That—we have some real heavy thresholds to meet here—
I agree.
—before the application of the ordinance comes into play.
I agree. Okay, thank you. David Paul?
Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Mr. Paul.
And counsel, good evening. It is what a joy it is to be here. Welcome, everybody. The greatest joy we have is when we collect and feel as we're one, isn't that true? We're all Americans. There was a quote in the paper today, I'm gonna paraphrase, that says, "When we prefer the power of love to the love of power, the world will be a better place." I've always felt that. I'm a strong supporter of law enforcement, and yet I've always felt that the collective "we" have failed the collective "us" in many ways, the people that are left out and on the fringes, and I try and speak for them when I can. I was at all three of the events for the racial profiling that was put on, and this is what I wanted to talk about when I was there. I talked before about my time at the youth home for delinquent boys where I worked, and there was one young man named Gary that I hit it off with. This was a bright, handsome, young black man that had no reason to trust me, but he opened up to me, I think, to confess certain crimes, to get them off his chest. But, you know, when you think about this story, you can look at it two ways. He told me of a time that he burglarized a house, and he climbed into a second-story window that he thought was empty, and he was confronted by the owner of the house standing there in his boxer shorts and a gun, rubbing his eye. Now, if you just say, I find a young black man breaking into my house, and I have a gun in my hand, most people will say, shoot him. But from my perspective of Gary, that never came through, because I saw the contrition and the pain and the shame, and he didn't know what to do. He had been failed up until that point. And I can tell you that—I don't understand why we hit it off, but I do. When two human hearts are willing to open themselves to the strange other for no apparent reason, God's holy light floods in and all is clear, and that's the connection we really We all need the power of the open heart, because short of that, nothing else will really work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.[1717.33][1717.33](applause) Anzar Muhammad?
Thank you, Mayor, and also the city council and staff. My name is Stan Muhammad, I am one of the co-founders of TCAL. I'm also a member of the Merit Commission. I'm also the executive director of the Helper Foundation that works directly with the population that we call "street gangs." Here's the concern that we have. Looking at what happened in Los Angeles as it relates to gang injunctions, there's a lot of people, a lot of young people, that's not gang-related or gang-affiliated, but may wear certain clothes, or they may look a certain way. And the concern is this: Will those young people be targeted if this becomes a reality? The individuals, the African-American males and females, Latino males and females in particular, will they be targeted if this becomes a reality? Because what we saw in Los Angeles dealing with the gang injunctions, even though there was individuals that was gang members, but there was non-affiliated young people who was being targeted by that reality. So my question to the mayor and to city council, if this becomes a reality, will those young people that's not affiliated be come— people that's not affiliated become part of harassment by law enforcement? Because it's a broad net here, Mayor. It's a broad net. And you talk about alternatives, well, we have those alternatives for the young people. We can't ask every individual who have lost their way to leave the city of Lancaster. Give us the opportunity to work with this population, and with your support, I believe we can change the attitude of these young people that's here in the Lancaster area and throughout this Antelope Valley. I've been here for about four years, man, to be honest with you, and I'm concerned about some of the policies that's being put on our people from this body here. We need to have more collaboration, we need to have more unity, we need to listen to our young people who's suffering. This young man just came up and gave you a story. I'm one of those stories. If I didn't have an opportunity to change my way, I wouldn't be standing in front of you. So give us that opportunity to work with these young people before we identify them as gang members. Because I say this in closing: Let's say you don't have a young man that's in a gang, but he's targeted by law enforcement. He get arrested, he go to juvenile hall, before you know it, he coming back gang-affiliated. He's coming back with tattoos on him. He's coming back bitter at his community, he's coming back bitter at his family, he's coming back bitter at us because we didn't intervene. So the alternative for you, Mayor, is intervention and prevention, and looking at strategies that work, and you have an expert in your area, and he's standing in front of you. Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I wish Mr. Smith was here today. He's always telling me to take my cap off out of respect for the flag. If he ever does that again, I have a response for him that he won't like. But I will tip my hat to the flag. You know, you're an elected group, and in the city of Bell recently, the elected group turned out to be a bunch of criminals. And Boy Scouts are a gang, Kiwanis are a gang, the Vagos, Hells Angels. It depends on your intent. Even some people who sit at the dais as a gang commit acts against the people they represent in the matter of money and investment. So remember, you're a gang making a gang rule. Thank you.
Welcome, your opportunity come before the city council and the mayor of Lancaster. I think one thing was said. There is a group that is and has intimidated our people, but it's not that motorcycle group you identified, any of them. It's the ones out here with these flag jackets and these guns. They not only intimidate and frighten, we listened for three days to the most compelling, most tragic stories of people who were not supposed to be harassed or made frightened or, more importantly, forced into a situation where they had to cop a plea to get out of jail. So many of us, and I was one who was also, and I won't go through my personal experience, but what I will say is, almost forty-five years of raising kids, I've seen atrocities perpetrated on them, but never at the rate that they're happening in this community. I heard some of the stories, and I don't pretend to think each and every one of them was accurate or factual, but what I do know is, there were young men and young women and a couple from our church who were frightened to the point where they were traumatized, too much to even consider, coming in a place like this. When Mr. Muhammad got up and spoke, he said he was a member of TCAL. It's a bunch of us that are. There is no, there is, there is any, no individual who would consider themselves anything other than a founder. And that is not by choice, it is out of necessity for the protection of our community and our neighborhood. We have seen and become victimized by, you don't need the ordinance because you're already doing it. You don't need the proof or the rule or the law to give you the right to go in and pull people out of activities you don't want them there, you do it anyway. And if you come into the community and you spot somebody who meets this profile, you're going to pick them up, put them in the backseat of the car, and you're going to run them through your whole skin. And they may have a ticket, but never be again. They may have something compelling that had happened to them that would justify an arrest. And then they're going to take a plea, and the moment they take that plea, their opportunity to take care of their family and to be productive citizens is completely lost. I regret that you were in China at the time these hearings were going on. I think you would have heard enough to understand other alternatives, such as what Stan mentioned, are available, and we should take advantage of it. Thanks.
Lyndi Williams?
Good afternoon. Thank you for taking the time. I just want to say that probably maybe ten years ago, I could have been considered one of those people, not gang-affiliated or anything like that, with my size and with my fact that I am tacky, and I know it. There's times when I'm standing out in front of the house, talking with the neighbors, someone may have been affiliated at one time, and it's Laker Day, and we're all wearing our Laker colors. If we're gathered at three, we're in trouble. Stop dividing, please unite. Just like a lot of these people are saying, if I'm going somewhere and it looks like a place where I may be scared, I have to ask myself, why am I scared? Now, if I'm scared because I'm judging someone else, and that's the wrong reason, because my armor's in the front, God walks before me, I have no problems. If I had children, because I don't, but if I had children, I'd lean over and have to tell my kid, "Why are you afraid, baby? Well, they look scary." Is that the only reason? Guess what? Your armor's in the front as well, and we're going to continue forward. But just because someone looks a certain way or they're dressed a certain way, like everybody else is saying, if they do something, throw them under the jail. Other than that, like the gentleman said, people will cop pleas because they're afraid. We don't need any more fear, because in the moment, everybody's okay with the fear, but what's going to happen? The people will push back. They will push back, and then from there, people aren't telling. We're not going to call when there is a party down the street, God forbid, another fourteen-year-old or someone else pass. We're not going to call because we don't care. If we feel left out, we feel stepped on, we're already bobbing just as individuals, as individuals, to pay our bills, to get to work, to have some gas in our car. You start stepping on our neighbors where they're bobbing too, everybody starts to drown. Include us, unite us as far as that goes, fine us. If we've congregated, you've told us, hey, you guys need to break it up, hit us in the pocket. Give us a forty-dollar fine, you got two months to pay it. You come back, it's hundred-and-twenty. You come back, it's this and that, because if we're not affiliated, we're not breaking the law, we don't got dope in our pockets, or whatever it is everybody thinks people are doing, hit us in our pocket. Put a little money in to the little city fund or wherever it needs to go, right? Put a little money, and next time, I may not hang out with my buddies in front of their house and talk to them, because you know what? I don't want to get hit for a hundred-dollar ticket. Maybe, just something to think about. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Williams, before you go.
Yes, sir.
You know, I get you're really sincere about this.
I am.
I'm a little, I don't understand why I have not encountered an outrage that we failed to protect that fourteen-year-old girl. And instead, I'm getting outraged over whether or not the Vagos should be able to wear their colors at a family event. I don't understand it. It seems to me that our priorities have become misplaced. I mean, most of you folks here ought to be wanting to hang me at the yardarm for failing to protect that fourteen-year-old. And instead, what I'm hearing is this incessant noise about our efforts to do precisely that. And nobody is coming forward saying, "We could help you protect that fourteen-year-old so we don't have another one." I, you know, when I was reading this stuff in China, I was, it broke my heart. The rage should have been directed right at us for failing to do what we're supposed to do. This rage for us making mistakes along the way, of making this a safe community, is falling on deaf ears. It really is. It is far more important to me that those fourteen-year-olds live than whether or not I'm offending some radical sixty generation, you know? I mean, and I'm not hearing solutions. I'm not, I'm not hearing, why don't we try this? You know, the only one who's come up with a solution from the black community so far is the black pastors, and we were getting ready to do that. We were getting ready to have a training program with the deputies to tell the difference between a gangbanger and a hip-hop kid, because we don't want to suck hip-hop kids into the system. And then this thing explodes over something that happened two and a half years ago, which has nothing to do with this administration. You know, I'm just having trouble understanding the priorities here, and it just seems to me that it's easier to pull out the old one-liners from twenty years ago and ten years ago and pound on the desk and make generalized fools of all of ourselves, and I'm including me in that, rather than trying to figure out how do we keep our fourteen-year-olds from being shot down in a party. And I'll tell you something, if we continue to allow the Vagos and the Mongols and these groups to show up at family events wearing colors, those kids are going to get caught in another crossfire. And we all know that, don't we? Don't we all know that? Well, then you're not, then you're not reading the newspaper. You're not, you're not reading the fact that those crossfires do occur. And, you know, I'm looking out at this crowd, and you all have kids. I mean, it's your kids that are in danger. It's not just our kids. And it seems to me that collectively, we could be doing something a lot better than what we're doing so far. Yes, ma'am?
Say what I think, it's a large picture. Short version, cut the commute time, cut the work week, let parents be parents. Parents are so busy not being allowed to be parents anymore because they have to work two, three, four, five, six jobs. So, Mr. Mayor, if you can fix that with that, God forbid, that fourteen-year-old child, she will have parents that sit her down at dinnertime, and she'll hate it, but by the time she's thirty, she'll love it.
I agree.
Right? Because they'll have to eat there, and they're dressed for dinner for Sunday, and so on and so forth. But until that comes, please, try to unite us, and I think there's less outrage, at least for me personally, because then it's going to point the finger as opposed to include. There was a time, hi Sheri, Sheri came in the house, but anyway, there was a time when there was a party, I called, it took four hours before the police showed up. I don't want to point the fingers at the police.
When was that?
Um, I told you, well, I'll tell you, I'll figure it out. But there was a time, it took four hours, and I know they're overworked. It was a Friday night, they're overworked, they're underpaid.
We've got cars dedicated just to party cars.
Yeah?
Okay, and we're adding to it.
But it's tough, it's tough, and I don't think anybody wants to tell because then the fingers will be pointed. I think they just want to stop what they see coming.
Okay.
Yeah? Thank you.
Thank you. Ivan, I don't know if that's a first name or a last name. But it has been, doesn't it?
Mr. Mayor, city council, thank you for your time. If you're a veteran in the United States military, please stand up and be recognized at this time. I'd like to state for the record, I'd like to state for the record that no one on the city council or the mayor is standing at this point in time. I'm a taxpayer and a resident of Lancaster. I proudly serve my nation and proudly serve the United States military. I currently feel that the tree of freedom is totally but surely losing branches that I fought and bled for to keep up. I stand before you now personally as a Lancaster resident that I am satisfied with the current ordinance. I have read it and reviewed it, as it allows Lancaster sheriffs to do their job more effectively and focus more on criminal street gangs as opposed to motorcycle clubs. The issue that I have, Mr. McGowan, is that it's the intent, and to rattle off stuff specifically on that piece of paper that you're reading from the California Penal Code that gives the definition is very broad and very vague. What needs to happen is, the overtime that's paid to these deputies to stand here right now to keep this quote "safe," they need to be out on the east side and the west sides of Lancaster, patrolling, so when they find a house with a party with fifty people, they go ahead and take care of business. Code enforcement comes and shuts down the vacant house so that we don't have fourteen-year-old kids at two-thirty in the morning getting shot at. You asked for a solution. I've had vehicles stolen from in front of my house on the west side. It took three and a half hours for sheriff deputies to come. When they came, they told me basically it was my problem, I got insurance, I'm lucky.
When did that occur?
With that being said, after reading last Saturday's Antelope Valley Press article, I have grave concern that this ordinance will not only criminalize my membership in a veterans motorcycle club, it will make my veteran brothers and myself a target for local law enforcement, but will ironically take away the very freedom I risked my life for. Also, by denying me entry to city events and private businesses where I have no criminal intent, you're also taking away one of my rights. You're also taking away money that my brothers and other clubs paid to this city for city-sponsored events, for city businesses, for restaurants that are operating within the city of Lancaster. From what I read in the article, the language of what is being proposed is overly broad and vague. It sounds like I would not be allowed to wear my club colors or invite my veterans brothers to my house or gather in front of my front porch for dinner. I would like to know what research firm you gathered all this data from. I hope it's not the same one that the city of Bell utilized. My club has donated over one thousand dollars to the Lancaster Veterans House. We have supported veterans' events in Lancaster for the last ten years with zero problems and zero intent for criminal activities. Do not put my club in the same box as a criminal street gang. Motorcycle clubs are not street gangs. City of Lancaster, keep your hands off, keep your, keep your hands and your laws off my patch and off my club.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, I'm Johnny Bryant. I've been a resident of Lancaster since 1959. I know most of the guys that are riding motorcycles, I've known them for years. I'm president of the local chapter of Vietnam Vets, and occasionally I have to do security searches on new members. And it's really funny that you keep saying all this stuff when I went to like Megan's Law, nine-three-five-three-four, nine-three-five-three-five, Roseman, none of these guys are on it. None of them's got a sex offender, none of them. I don't know what you're talking about. I've been running with these people for thirty years. Ain't none of them sex offenders. Where do you get that at? That's all I'm asking. If you're going to say it, you're trying to fool some people out here that don't know any better. I don't intimidate people. I just am what I am. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you. I'm sorry that I intimidate you. I truly am. I have no intention of that. I have no intention of intimidating anybody in here. I'm in a man's motorcycle club. We are a man's motorcycle club, not outlaw, not a street gang, and not a gang, period. If you check the records, we don't really have any criminal record up here, all right? I was involved in a court case where they brought in a supposed gang expert, and he stated that the last seven, ten years, we're not a menace to this society. We haven't caused anybody here any trouble. I don't understand why, what I was told in the court, because it was about me, all right? I've been a member of this motorcycle club a long, long time, and I'll be here till the day I die. We don't want to infringe on anybody's rights. What happened over at the, on the boulevard was wrong, was totally wrong. We had no intention of causing anybody... We had no intention of causing anybody problems, and we don't need to be babysat. Now, we get pulled over on a regular basis, and we're detained, put in the back of the car with cuffs on, for nothing, because we're let go. Now, if I've done something wrong, then I wholeheartedly agree with what you're saying. I need to go to jail. I need to pay my debt to society if I've done something wrong, if I've infringed anybody here. And I believe in that, and I always have. But until that time, I don't want anybody to look at me and think I'm a gangster. Because I'm not a gangster. I'm 62 years old, and I've been, like I said, a long time. But it's a man's motorcycle club, nothing more, nothing less. And I'm very proud of that. As Johnny Bryant said, I've known Johnny 40 years. We worked at Lockheed together. I've worked on top-secret programs that none of you could have access to, all right? And I don't mean that as a slur, all right? The president didn't have access on programs I was in. And I'm damn proud of that. Excuse my language. And I'm also proud of being a Vago member, and I'll continue to be. And we are not out to hurt anyone. And thank you for your time.
Teresa Malone?
I dislocated my toe last night.
Oh, okay.
It'll pop back in.
Okay.
My family's been in the city of Lancaster since 1967, according to the gas company, when I changed the service over from my father's name into mine. I went to Montavista School. I drove past it on the way here. There was gang sign a half a block from Montavista School, as big as that council desk.
It's not going to be there tomorrow.
In the city of Escondido, they handled their gang problem a little differently than I think we do here. When they pull over or take into custody a gang member, they take his picture and they put it in their gang book. So they know who the gang members are in their town. Sounds like a solution to me. And the only reason I'm wearing a black t-shirt is because it's after Labor Day. And yes, I have the right to wear an Air Force t-shirt. I served my country for four years. And my unit prevented World War III on at least one occasion because three people on the Dew Line saw birds that they thought were inbound missiles, and we told them they were full of it.
Hi, Council. Hope you guys don't fight as bad as Black Widow. Anyways, I'm Jay Martin. Vagos? Anyways, I was there at the street scene a couple weeks ago. All due respect, you're wrong. I didn't have any colors. I had green on. Check it out. They told our patches to leave, and then they came in and told anybody wearing green to leave. That was Bex. I wonder who owns that place? So, don't sit there and use a broad brush and say, "You know what's going to happen," because it ain't going to happen like that. Truth of the matter is, I moved up here from San Fernando Valley. I'm out of Pecoina. I left there because I don't like gangs. That was almost 30 years ago, when this place was quiet. It was nice. Wanted to raise my kids here, a wife and two kids. I'm not in a gang. Never would be. Don't profess to ever want to be. That's not what we're about. That's not who we are. Just because you're afraid of something, that's on you. All you got to do is reach out your hand and come to meet somebody. We have a lot of meet and greets, people. You're all welcome. We have our tour runs we give to the community. Please, we welcome you guys to come out, because nobody's ever left beat up or hurt or in trouble or mad. They've always had a good time, and we always do have a good time. We don't step on nobody's toes. We don't want to. It's not what we're about. We're part of this community, just like you are. So we deserve the right to be treated so. You want to talk about, what, rapes and murders and all this other crap? Well, let's check it out. That's a big group. It happens. Doesn't mean we're doing it. Check it out. I think those guys standing back there and their big group has been convicted of stuff like that, too. Are they gang members? LAPD gang members? That's what you guys are saying? That's how you tell it? Who decides that? Them when they walk in? Who decides it? That's all I want to know. I don't understand how we get lumped up as a gang member just because we ride a motorcycle and we wear a certain color.
You mean, you as the Vagos?
Yeah, me. No, me as Jay Martin. I'm not talking about the Vagos. How do I get lumped in as a gang member? Do I look like one now because I'm wearing green?
I don't know that you did. I know that the FBI has said the Vagos is a criminal gang.
How long ago?
Now, that's just the reality of it.
Exactly, yeah.
As early as two years ago.
Now, when did... How many times have you had problems with any Vagos in this area as a group?
My concern...
Last time?
My concern is that we not have at city events volatile situations that are... You know, I agree that the ordinance, as it's slowly been expanded and expanded, is probably too broad. And what I'm going to suggest that we do is get it back to criminal justice and work it, and work it in a way that preserves the safety of this community.
We're part of the community. What about our safety?
Well, as long as you're law-abiding and not scaring people...
At no point, we will law-abuse, sir.
And not scaring people. You asked me a question, and I'm going to answer.
Yes, you have to. Go ahead.
I thought that the event on Saturday night that you all are talking about was a wonderful event. I saw people from incredibly diverse backgrounds, including motorcycle gang backgrounds, coming together and coming together as a community. I was just awed by what a great event that evening was. I don't know how long that event would have stayed that way. As people left, if they saw a gang or a motorcycle club, let me get it clear. But you got to admit that historically, that group, those colors have become iconic for violence with a lot of people. And that is historic. That's an historic fact that I don't think too many people that aren't Vagos would disagree with.
No, you're playing with the broad brush.
That doesn't mean your particular club is. But this is a 1% motorcycle gang.
No, we're not.
Well, the FBI says you are. The ATF says you are.
We are not.
And until that perception in people's head changes...
How's it going to change with us doing this? How's it going to change with you making the ordinance like this?
I think this is a huge step in the right direction.
That isn't going to change anything. That's putting your opinion out to everybody else.
Wait a minute. First of all, you got to understand, I am listening to you. I am thinking that we do have to make some compromises and some changes. I'm just not willing to go as far as you want to go.
No, how far do you want to go?
But I think this is a huge step.
Here's what I think. I think we all have a right to be in a public place anytime we want. Everybody does. I think that all these people out here will tell you the same thing. That's what they've been through. Every race, every creed, every age, every group.
I think that if a group goes in to deliberately intimidate people...
I agree.
...they have to leave.
No, not intimidate. Intimidate, that's your opinion. Nobody's... There's nobody... We have never went nowhere to intimidate anybody.
I think intimidation is a fact.
No, that's your opinion.
I think it's a measurable fact.
On that Saturday, who did we intimidate? Nobody. Nobody. We sat around talking to everybody, having a good time, until we asked to leave. And then when we asked to leave, first it was because we had patches on. Then the guys that left with patches said, "No, you guys go ahead and stay. Have a good time. Mingle, have a good time." They left. Not half hour later, anybody wearing green had to leave.
Well, I think that's outrageous.
Now, that's ridiculous.
I think if somebody told you to leave because you were wearing green, that that's outrageous, and I will look into that.
Okay, good.
I can't imagine somebody doing that.
Oh, yeah, you'd have to.
That's just wrong.
One thing I don't do is lie. I don't ever lie.
I'm not saying you are.
I'm just telling you, that's exactly what happened.
And what I'm telling you is I will look into that and investigate it. And what I'm also saying is, yeah, this thing has to be changed. I'm just not willing to change it as much as you want, but maybe the rest of the council is.
But you're not supposed to be willing. You're supposed to... People are supposed to have a say in this. You ain't listening to anybody.
They did. They voted for me.
Yeah, yeah. That was their mistake. But you ain't listening to nobody, are you? But hey, we're going to keep rectifying next time around, won't we?
Well, you know, you should run against me. Okay.
I am running this meeting, not you. Sit down. Sit down.
I'm Bob Fulbright.
Oh, come on down. I want the video of this.
Hello, my name's Bob Fulbright.
Hello, Mr. Fulbright.
I'm with the Vagos Motorcycle Club up here. And I'm sorry that we've hit this point. The thing is that we got stopped a couple times in one day as a... I was going to bring up the street thing, but it's fairly well been handled on the Lancaster Boulevard. But we were stopped once. They gave us a... It was like a routine thing with 15 police cars, which was fine. Later on, we got stopped. It was... Excuse me. It was totally different. And they were, as far as I'm concerned, we all treat each other with respect. I'm 73 years old, and I got handcuffed, slammed my head into the police car, and I went... I never even got a chance to say, "Excuse me." And so I went... We were going to go file a report with Palmdale. We went down there, we talked to them, and I said... He said, "You can go ahead and file a report, but let's try to handle it internally." And I said, "That's fine. I'll deal with that, but I want a week to think about it." I came back, I talked to him, and I said, "Well, how about if we try this? I'll take my old chapter, which is Mojave Chapter, out, and you guys pull us over and do your routine thing, because if we don't have any communication or any way to talk to you guys, we'll never have anything. We're going to be right back here again doing what he's trying to do, whatever it is, good, bad, or indifferent. But you know what? We've all done something for this community. I've been here 30 years. And I just don't understand why we can go from one point to another point and be treated totally different by the same... Not the same officers, but different officers. And I'm not opposed to going and letting them pull us over and do their routine and learn about us and talk to us. But when they come in like gangbusters, I mean, that's where the... Okay, let's go to the gang bangers and stuff like that. Why do they have an attitude? Because nobody takes the time to communicate. If you at least say, "Hello, how are you doing?" Instead of, "Hey, never mind what I'm going to say," how do you talk to them? How do you have any communication with those people? And the young people you're talking about? Not everybody's as old as I am. Thank God. But, you know, I mean, and I ride every day and every week, and I'm running out of time both ways. No, but I mean... But I mean, up here on the Mojave Desert, we've made a practice of trying to get along. We've gone to Thunder on the Lot and all the places that go, and we've never had any trouble. I mean, you can look back at our records up here on the hill, and we haven't had any problems.
Mr. Fulbright, you don't have any argument or problem with not wearing colors to Thunder on the Lot?
We've been allowed to wear our soft patches there.
What is that?
That's a t-shirt. And we came...
And I don't think there'll be a problem with that in the city of Lancaster once we straighten all this out.
Well, we went... Can I have two minutes?
Yeah, I killed your time.
When we first got to the... When you were dedicating Lancaster Boulevard, it was supposedly a car show, bike show. That's what we were told. We went and signed up, and everything was fine. We got there, and some of the rookie officers came over and said, "You're going to have to leave." And I went, "Just a minute." And I went to one of the guys that was putting it on. I says, "You need to talk to these officers, because there's no point getting in an argument. You're not going to win it on the streets, and why try to? All we're going to do is look bad because there those jerks are again." And I'm not talking about the police, because it reflects on us. And so a sergeant came up, and he said, "You're going to have to go, but I'll tell you what. Go park where the people are, the citizens that are coming to the... Because it's not a bike show." I said, "Okay." He says, "You can go over there, you park, you come back, you can wear your colors." And I told him, I said... He said, "I don't want any trouble." I said, "If there's any trouble whatsoever, please contact me. I'll be here, and I will deal with it." And when we left, I saw the sergeant and a rookie officer, and I thanked him. I said, "Thank you very much. We had a good time, and we're all leaving." And that was it. But I mean, if you don't take time to communicate a little bit... I mean, I know there's a barrier between us, good, bad, or indifferent, whether we like it or not. But until we learn to talk to each other in a civil manner, it's not going to go anywhere. And it's with the kids, too. I mean, jeez, I pretty well live my life, but look at the youngsters that are coming up that you guys are trying to help and do something for. But it seems to be the barrier of the policemen against the kids or whatever. You know, I mean, it's just the communication thing. And until we get that down, we're always going to have trouble. And it's sad, because it's a lot of fun in this desert. So, thank you.
This really is something I want to resolve. And I want to resolve it in a way that works for everyone, as close as we can get there. We... You know, I'm going to be totally upfront with you. What I'm planning, I don't know what these folks are planning, is we have the Streets of Lancaster coming up, and so I need an ordinance for that. After that, it will go back to... I'm going to ask that it go back to criminal justice and be rewritten. And I would love to have you involved in that process. More importantly, if you're going to be attending Lancaster events, I would like you to be involved in that process early.
That's fine.
Okay? Because there is a friction, and there is a potential for volatility. And what I... Believe it or not, the only thing I want to accomplish is that these families be absolutely safe.
We want the same thing, brother.
And I don't disagree that you... And I do not believe that you don't. Am I making myself clear? I mean, I agree with you.
We might be a little more outspoken about protecting our families than some of the people, but if we all mean the same thing.
But I also think there are counterforces. There are other groups. There are things that we've seen historically happen that I don't want to be wringing my hands after the 14-year-old is dead.
Well, I agree.
All right? And so if you're willing to work with us on that, we're willing to work with you.
You guys have my phone number. Call me anytime.
Actually, why don't we set something up, Mark? Could we do that? And, you know, bring whatever to other people. If it gets much bigger than that, it's not a meeting, it's just a yelling match.
Oh, I understand.
Okay, so bring two other people, and let's figure something out.
Sounds good to me.
David Erlich?
Didn't expect this. I just thought there was an ordinance that was going to be a little bit broader, that possibly in the future was going to cause problems. I think two years ago, you talked about a war on gangs at the mayor debate, and I said, "That's going to bring a lot of problems." Um, okay, that's fine, that, those are numbers, but, uh, I'm gonna hold you accountable for something you said. You, uh, you said you had a difference, uh, between whether someone has the right to wear Nazi clothes, or, or, and you said you disagreed with that, and you also said the Constitution's not etched in stone. That scares me. I would came here to talk about verbiage in a code that's very broad, that can be used in the future, and I heard you say something that scares me. You say the Constitution is, is, we're barely hanging by a thread. You're a Republican. I, I'm a Republican because of the Constitution. The Constitution is the one, the one platform, the reason I'm, I'm a Republican, is to keep, is to keep our rights, and every day, more and more, they're slipping away. I just, I, there's, I'm not, I'm not, I wasn't intimidated, there's people out here that I didn't know, that I knew, that are, 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 are wearing, uh, patches and stuff. And, and then all of a sudden, I, I'm standing next to someone I know, and, and, and I got scared because I see what's going on, the sheriff's department all of a sudden is scaring me, and, and the guys in green are scaring me, because I got Mr. Anderson walking back there, like, like he's, like he's walking the line. He's walking the line, and I'm standing next to, to, to a friend of mine, and I didn't know he was a, he was a motorcycle club. I didn't know this, but I felt really uncomfortable all of a sudden, I'm like, "Oh, my God." And, 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 and he says to me, he says to me, "They're, they're taking, they're not taking pictures of the citizens." I said, "Aren't you a citizen?" And he said, "No." There's a divide there somewhere. And I didn't realize that all these people are gonna be here over this ordinance that I thought was gonna affect us in the future. It's affecting us now, and you, and you need to just, I mean, we need, please, the Constitution, uh, you, oh, God, that scared me. I need you to, I need you, that's, that's all I gotta say, that scared me.
You know, allow me to just say, if it was etched in stone, we wouldn't need a Supreme Court to interpret it. That the, the, I mean, and, and I am, I am heartened to know that Scalia agrees with me, and he couldn't be any more Republican. Nigel Holly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, for giving me the opportunity to come in and speak. Uh, I'm Nigel Holly, I'm with the Community Action League. Uh, when I was called to come out here to, 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 uh, hear about this ordinance, um, I wanted to just rush home so I can change clothes before I came, but I'm actually kinda happy that I didn't get the opportunity to change clothes, because, uh, this is gonna be a big problem with this particular ordinance. We're gonna be profiled. Uh, the sheriff department's gonna have the opportunity to say, "You look like a gang member, let me see what you are." And then you said that this, this law is based on intent. Well, who determines the intent? That's the issue here. Who determines the intent? Who determines what my intents are? I was in the city of Lancaster, driving my car and was pulled over. I had just left Bishop Hearn's house, who was the former mayor of Lancaster. I was pulled over, harassed, snatched out of my car, put in the backseat of a police car, and told to shut up and listen while my car was searched because of what they thought I was gonna do, or because of what they assumed my intent was. And I am a tax-paying citizen. I am someone who helps to vote and put people like yourself in office. I am someone who is out here for the community to help support them and make sure that their laws are, and their rights aren't being violated. This particular ordinance is gonna cause unnecessary tensions that are already here in the city of Lancaster. As an African-American, we are already being targeted by the sheriff department. And I'm not gonna sit here and say that every member of the sheriff department is bad. There's some good members of the sheriff department, we have some good deputies. However, by giving them this, giving them this right, this free rein to do what they want, it's not gonna come out in the benefit of the community. And as you've heard here today, one person after the next has come to this mic and said that they are opposed to this ordinance. And as are elected city officials, you have to hear what the community is saying, and you have to vote no on this particular ordinance, not vote it in and then re, rewrite it later. You have to vote no on it now, period. And then if you feel that there's an ordinance that needs to be placed, then you need to implement the new ordinance, but don't implement a bad ordinance and put over, and put this over on the community as if it's something worth us having. This is not a dictatorship, this is a democracy. And no one person can say to who's what and where they belong, or what they're affiliated with. Because if you look at me, when I'm dressed the way I am, I could be assumed as a gang member.
Ow.
Ow. You asked your sheriff when he put me in the backseat of that car and treated me like that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, honorable and committed members of our community. My name is Darren Parker, and I'm chairman of the Antelope Valley Human Relations Commission, and also, if you wanna say, one of the individuals that helped put together the merit commission that addresses the data that you talked about from two years ago. I had a whole different speech before I came up here. First of all, I wanna make it clear that the merit commission is committed community leaders from the African-American and Latino community that have unapproachable integrity. We did that, uh, exactly to address what you talked about with the fourteen-year-old. In the past, you would've had riots, rallies, protests, people storming city hall, but when you look at the incident of the fourteen-year-old, there are multi-faceted issues that have to do with that, starting with the fact that she was fourteen years old at one o'clock in the morning. I have five daughters and three granddaughters, and I can fathom that any of my daughters would have been out at that time. But I'm not blaming it on the child, I'm not blaming it on their parents, I'm blaming it on that they didn't have the resources to make better decisions. But first of all, as an African-American person, an African-American fifty-year-old man from Compton, California, I know that the responsibility first starts at home. So we created that commission with Latino and African-American leaders to make sure that we start to, one, address those issues that affect our communities respectively, starting at home, with us taking ownership of some of those issues that should not have been. There have been several people that have talked about the resources. I'm very much aware of the call that was made to the African-American ministers, and I assure you that if not every African-American minister, only the ones that I don't know of are not part of that merit commission. Because it takes people leading by example in order to make changes in the environment. You cannot police it out, you can't arrest it out, and you can't cause, as, as Supervisor Antonovich once said, "If the people do not trust government, there is tyranny." I think that if the people don't trust government, there could be anarchy. We're in a time where there's pressure with our economics, that people don't know what they're gonna do from one day to the next. I know the right path is not to try to scare people. The one thing I've learned as chairman of the Human Relations Commission for the last ten years, has been that as human beings, we fear what we don't know, and we hate what we fear. And for some reason, there is a perception in our community that our leadership is preying upon those of us that are most vulnerable by using our fears to conduct business. I support the sheriff's department and have supported them for many years, and they know that. Everyone here that has worked with me knows that. There are not bad deputies, or deputies that do bad things, just like there are no bad human beings, there are human beings that do bad things. But we must work collectively to solve this problem in our community, and not take an individual approach which demonizes any individual until we have given them the time to make their change to be a productive citizen here in this valley. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the speaker cards? Is there a motion?
Could we close the public hearing, and then let's have some discussions?
It's not a public hearing, so I don't have to. Uh, but yeah, it's closed.
Okay. Yeah, do you wanna address this?
I forget, did I read the preamble when I started?
It was not a public hearing.
No, on the cards.
Oh, I don't know, I don't recall.
I must not have, I don't remember reading it, so I'll go ahead and keep it open.
Okay.
Cynthia Madgrill? Is she here? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Cynthia Madrigal.
Madgrill?
Madrigal.
I'm sorry.
I've gotten a couple of letters from you, 'cause you were trying to help me with the case.
What?
You were trying to help me with the case, I contacted your law firm.
You're even a client, and I got your name wrong?
Just like, "Hi, I'm Cynthia Madrigal." No, I am not vago-affiliated.
Okay.
Let's get that clear. I don't like being called that, because, no, I can't work Thunder on the Lot because of that.
And, and you're affiliated with me, I mean, you're my client.
Yeah, I also be, I used to be a chamber of Congress member with Jim Ledford. Now, what I do is I like to volunteer.
You were doing so well.
I like to volunteer when I needed help. So when one of their brothers passed, I worked the fifty-fifties. When they have their toy runs, I work the fifty-fifty and raise a lot of money. That money goes to the domestic violence shelter when they do the toy runs. Did you know that? It's called Motorcycle Club. I'm not affiliated. I help any club, any chapter that needs help. I used to live in Somalitahanga. I used to live in Somalitahanga, too. Used to work at the place. Play pool there, see? These are my colors. The only patch I wear on my back is the Love Ride. Do you know what the Love Ride is?
Yes, I do.
Well, unfortunately, I don't have a vehicle anymore, so now I do it by foot, so I can't work and help when they're needed anymore. My mother also used to do. They're not as bad as you think they are, they do do a lot for the community. All clubs do. I'm not saying they're perfect, but they're a men's club, and now I can't even work Thunder on the Lot because they have me vago-affiliated. That was Ron's doing, 'cause he had me get their money when they rolled in, because they trusted me with their money. I didn't even know this meeting was going on tonight. I just happened to be walking downtown to go to, over there, and one of your associates says, "Come join the council." Me, "Okay," I'm there, and then I walked in. One of my favorite clubs is here tonight, too. Baka, bikers against child abuse.
They're not on the list.
No, they're not on the list, but they're here. There's one. I don't know who's on the list, I don't even know this is going on tonight. Surprised.
Thank you, Cynthia.
You're welcome. Have a nice evening.
You, too. Uh, Janice Hunt? Oh, by the way, if your cards aren't in, we're not taking any more cards, I'm, I'm taking about ten late ones, and I rarely ever do that, I think I failed to do the announcement.
Hello.
Hi.
First off, I'd like to thank you for, um, reaching out to the other guy that was here, and you got his number to set up a meeting to kinda clarify some of this stuff. But the real reason I wanted to speak today is that it seems on the surface that this ordinance doesn't, um, include everyone. But, um, we had an experience with my club, who's not even a motorcycle club, um, where we went down to the Saddle Ranch in, um, Universal Studios and was thrown out. We've never even committed a crime in our life, we're out celebrating a sister's birthday. You know, so I'm speaking today because I really wanna know what steps will the city of Lancaster do to, um, prevent our club again from being lumped in, with something that we have no involvements with, you know? So, and I think that's what most people are here for, they wanna know what steps you guys are gonna take. We know that you guys wanna implement it, but what steps will you really take to prevent harassment and embarrassment of people who are just out to have fun, you know? I, I would suggest that you guys have something here at the city hall where you invite out the local clubs and celebrate the biker community that you have here that are not criminals. You might be the only city that can celebrate that, you know? So, we would like for you guys to consider that. Everybody don't wanna be lumped in, but it is way broad, and it allows things like what happened to our club at Saddle Ranch, um, at Universal Studios to happen, who were humiliated by, with over five hundred people watching. We were having dinner, there's nothing that's still having dinner, and, you know what I'm saying? It's a group of people out amongst a group of people, so not much room to even commit a crime if you wanted to, but that's not what we were there for. So, that's our main concern, is, um, ensure that you guys take the proper steps to make sure that the harassment doesn't happen, in, including, you know, reaching out to the community, inviting us out, you know? We're law-abiding citizens, we're working citizens, we live here, I've been here since I was in the sixth grade, you know, so I was here when there was three junior highs here, there's a million of them now, you know? So it's like, that's my main concern, that's the concern of the people that I socialize with, you know?
Yeah, I, I think that's such a, a valid criticism, I think there has to be a procedure in place, that, that, uh, that any, even the appearance of an abuse is addressed.
Right, correct.
And, uh, I'll work on that.
Okay.
And, and I'll have something in the next thirty days, okay?
That sounds great.
Would you make certain that it's on, that we, that we do that, so that we have something in thirty days? Thank you very much. That was Janice Hunt, right? Okay, good. We're gonna be in touch with you, okay? Aaron Rumsey?
Good evening. My name is Aaron Rumsey, and I'm representing top-notch riders, uh, we're a motorcycle club here in Lancaster. Um, matter of fact, we invited you out to, uh, we, we did a backpack drive for the Boys and Girls Club, and we wanted you to get in the dunk tank, but, uh, you were busy that day, so...
For some reason, that, that word never got to me.
First of all, I'm proud to live in a country where we're allowed to come up here and speak. Um, I wanna give honor to all the, all the veterans here. I, too, I'm a veteran, um, Desert Storm veteran, uh, where I was medically retired from the Air Force. Our bike club is founded with a law enforcement foundation, um, that's how it got started. We do, we work with the Boys and Girls Club, we go down to LA and feed the homeless every month, uh, walk around with sack lunches, it's called Sack Lunch Sunday, and probably some of the folks in here have been to that. So, my concern is, um, because I've, uh, been in a situation where, uh, I was at an event, and law enforcement had come in, and because I was wearing my colors, they assumed that I was with people that were in a different club that were causing havoc. Now, you can't, as many people have said, paint such a broad brush over everyone, and I'm wanting to know is, 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 is how, how is law enforcement, which I know it's a hard job, how are they gonna separate the, the people that, that are causing the issues? 'Cause when we're riding down the highway and there's twenty of us, and we're wearing our colors, we stand out. And when we're at an event at a park, where we're having a barbecue, you know, the music's going, there's no alcohol, we're having a good time, and law enforcement comes in and wants to strong-arm us, and we're not doing anything. You know, we, we have a permit from the park, um, that, like I said, there's no alcohol, but we're still, uh, because we're wearing a vest with a patch on the back, we're still con- considered to be a, a gang, or a motorcycle club. But there's been a lot of events and a lot of situations where law enforcement has, has given us a hard time. And I know it's hard, I know it, being, being in law enforcement, I know it's not easy. You know, in Desert Storm, everybody's law enforcement, I don't care what your job is. In Vietnam, everyone was law enforcement, everyone carried a gun. I don't care if you was a cook, you carried a gun. So, I know it's difficult, but I'm, but how, how are they gonna separate, how are they gonna, how, you can't just strong-arm everybody.
And it's certainly not what we want them to do.
Right.
Okay. We're working on it. Good. Pharoah Mitchell?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council.
Good evening.
Um, good evening. I'm also one of the members of the Community Action League, TCAL. And we're a group of organizations that started maybe several months ago, and we built up so much momentum, there are now hundreds of people knocking on our doors, white, black, lawyers, doctors, everybody knocking on our door to be a part of TCAL. And we all have one voice, it's not the concern of the gangs, we all wanna get rid of gangs. What we're concerned is, is the profiling and, um, arresting our good tax-paying citizens and trumping them up on false charges. We're not here to fight you with, um, trying to eliminate the gangs, because we want that also. We just want them to stop profiling. No, we don't want, we demand that they stop profiling everybody, thinking that they're, um, gang members or gang-affiliated, and also harassing our young people. We wanna, uh, demand that that stops, because what's going on is you guys are blaming our whole community.
Women, what do you mean, "you guys"?
I'm using that word from "you guys." So, what's going on is, um, ninety percent of our community is being blamed for only what ten percent does. There's only ten percent of a bad element, but ninety...
It's actually much less than that, much less.
Okay, but ninety percent of our community is being targeted because of that. The people on Section Eight, they just wanna have a better life, but they're being targeted as criminals, and they're made to feel crim- as criminals. We as, we at TCAL, we've come up with the solutions and the answers to the problems that you guys have. We have answers, we have solutions, we have ways of creating jobs to keep these kids out of trouble. So, we're opening to you guys to say, "Hey, we're willing to partner with you for solutions." We are a solution-oriented organization, but we will not stand by and continue to let our people be profiled, meaning white, black, Chinese, or whatever, we're not gonna continue to let our people be profiled. So we are willing to work with you guys in this council for solutions, that we do have good solutions, and if you're wo- willing to work with us, we can all put an end to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Roberta Stiskel? 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 Going, going, gone. Johnny O'Kane?
Good evening. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Johnny O'Kane, I represent Union Ironworkers in Los Angeles. And my tie to this tonight is I have membership that live up here in this community. I got membership that ride motorcycles. I got membership that put patches on their back. But what it is, before the word "local hire" ever became popular, the building trades tended to local hire. They picked young black kids out of the community. They picked brown kids. They picked white kids with tattooed necks from Lancaster. So, the ironworkers, they have their own patch, but in the ironworkers, we've got green, we've got red and white, we've got black and white. And we've got kids that have come aboard, turned their lives around, but they're not going to turn their back because they're loyal enough to their loved ones that they're not going to completely change their lifestyle. Now, they live in your communities. In November, they might be voting for you or against you. But the reality is, it's too big of a blanket to just throw across a community and I hope you guys would take your time and think that through thoroughly. Because what patch are you going to go after next? I buy cookies from little girls and they've all got the same patch on, so I want to keep buying them. Thank you.
I don't think they're on the FBI list. Kelly Baker? And that's our final speaker.
How you doing, Mayor?
Good evening. How are you?
I originally came, I was just going to sit and listen to what's going on. One of the vets brought up a valid point. He asked how many people here stood up, took an oath for our country. It's something you guys need to understand. None of you stood up, okay? Every one of the vets here swore an oath. The right for someone to say something that absolutely makes their blood boil. 100% completely against what I believe in, I swore an oath to defend your right to say that. You have a flag behind you. You'll find that most of the brothers in this room that wear colors are true patriots. A flag goes down on a parade, they stand up, put their hands over their hearts, okay? That's standing up for our country and our constitution. A great man, Franklin, um, Benjamin Franklin, once said, "Those that give up liberty for freedom deserve neither." If you have the right to discriminate against me because I wear a three-piece patch, or a two-piece patch, or a one-piece patch, because I'm six foot two, 290 pounds with a ponytail, and I look like the guy that somebody saw in a milk carton or in a post office, then all you're doing is breeding fear. Rather than showing up to our events, showing up to Relay for Life, the bike club, and several of the other clubs here help sponsor us to raise money for the American Cancer Society. Those are the things that we're here for. We believe in something. We have the right to believe in that. We have the right to walk down the streets and be able to give candy or toys to kids at Christmas time because they don't have that? To be able to give to people that aren't going to be able to have care, aren't going to be able to get a cure for their problems? We give to the community. We ask the community, "Be fair back to us." Now, you brought up the gentleman in the back. They do a wonderful job. I've been pulled over by three of your officers in town just because I wear a cut. No other reason. Throw their lights on. I'll, I'll tell you this much. The officers were honest. I'm sorry. They, you have to give them credit for that. Why'd you pull me over? You're flying colors. Okay. What's your club? I have nothing to hide. Most of the brothers in here have nothing to hide whatsoever. We're all members of the community. We all pay our taxes. We all just want to get along. And that's all we're asking for you. Racial profiling is racial profiling. Whether it's over a patch, it's over your race, or over your creed, you're still profiling. And that's not fair. And I swore on the constitution not to let that happen. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for your comments. The speaker cards are over. Any comments?
Well, just a few.
You've got two volumes of notes there.
Notes here, right here. Okay. You know what? I don't think that our intent is to harass and profile and to bother people in general. But when you have information that, that the FBI comes forward and gives information to us, to law enforcement, you know, we're going to pay attention to it. As, as I was listening to people talk, I thought, "Do you remember where we were in 2007?" Do you remember where we were in 2007? There was graffiti everywhere. There were pit bulls everywhere. There were pit bull attacks every other day. I remember when we started AB War on Gangs and Mayor Perez said, "We will drive on pothole, but we are going to be safe and the citizens of this community are going to be safe." We all took an oath of office. And as far as the vets in this, in this room, you get no more respect from anybody than you do from me. I, I will bend over backwards for a vet. Thank you for your service. At the same time, there are issues. There are people that are saying that they've been profiled, they've been harassed, they've been trumped up false charges. You know, I, I'm not going to say that there are some things that have happened that maybe shouldn't have happened, but I'm going to say that our deputies do an outstanding job. They put their life on the line every single day. Their wives kiss them goodbye in the morning, or the afternoon, or the night, and they don't know if they're going to come home. Thank you, deputies, for what you do. Having said that, I just want to say that I recommend that anybody who does not, like, like you said tonight, come to our meetings. Come and see what we're all about. We'll do a ride-along with the deputies. I did a ride-along before I got elected to this office. And I was amazed at the patience and the kindness and the professionalism that they used because I would have been out of there in five minutes. It only took one time going to Walmart with a little 12-year-old that was shoplifting that I would have been the one going to jail. So, that said, this is not a democracy, it's a republic. And we have rules and we have laws. And what we're trying to do is to come up with a good ordinance that will help protect the citizens of Lancaster and not to profile. And Mr. McEwen said it. It's definitely a pattern of consistent criminal conduct that's being looked at and not at people who are there to have a good time and to take part of the events in Lancaster. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rand?
I do. I've participated in Thunder on the Lot for 16 years. It's not about the patches. It's not about the, I don't think there's any group of people that give more than the bikers in this community. They give out of their, their, their hearts. They give totally, we give to 28 different charities. With Thunder on the Lot, we raised over $300,000 with the bikers, okay? It's not about the bikers. It's not about the patches. It's about the criminal activity, okay? That's why I asked them earlier. It's about the criminal activity that's taking place. It's not about the, the vets as a biker group. It's not about that. That's, I, I, I wouldn't stand for that. It's about criminal activity. If the individuals are doing a criminal activity, they need to be taken out of our public events, okay? That's all we're saying. It's, it's, it's real simple. These guys do a great job. If they're doing a criminal activity, take them out of the event. That's the way we need to look at it. That's, we need to give them the tools to do that with, okay? It's not about your patches. It's not about the colors. It's not about any of that kind of stuff, okay? And again, I've worked on it for 16 years as far as for Thunder on the Lot. I believe in you guys and I think you're a great group of people, okay? We have a event, a Fallen Heroes event, okay? 500 people will show up in, on Sunday for that. It's a great event and it's not about that. It's about the individuals, the 10% this individual talked about that's breaking the law. We need to get those off the streets. We need to give our deputies the tool and the support to help them do that. And that's what I'm behind.
Thank you. Mr. Rand?
I, I think that my, some of the things that have been spoken tonight from my colleagues kind of mirrors my same feelings. Originally, when I got this ordinance, the things that I circled was the criminal street gang, the intimidation, the dominance, and then the ongoing commencement of illegal drugs. I know everybody tonight came here with a lot of emotion. There was some high points and then there was even some times where we had a chance to, to laugh. And then I heard some things from the, the mayor tonight that says that there's, and I want to make sure that everybody understands, there's a willingness from this council to not have a divided community. And, you know, my concern is, is we have an event coming up. This is an emergency ordinance. Maybe that we need to get some clarification for the duration of time. And then I also heard from the mayor to, to speak and extend a hand to invite some of the people that have spoken tonight, some of the people that are here tonight, to come back in and, and work with the criminal justice. If this is going to be an ordinance long-term, then I think that should allow everybody the opportunity for an input and, and, and work closely together. And I don't know if my colleagues would think there are differences, but at least that's some of the things that I've heard tonight. But clearly, the way I read and make the interpretation, I heard Mr. McEwen, I heard from Councilman Chris speak about making sure that the deputies have the tools to make sure our streets are safe. And, you know, I, I'm for two things. One, making sure there's clarity on the emergency ordinance. And then I heard Mayor Perez tonight speak about coming back around and bringing the people together and taking a look and seeing if we need to make modifications so that people here tonight, if they're, they don't fit the description down here, is to make sure that you always feel included. So, I put that out there and I think I want to turn it back over to the mayor because obviously he's the one that started down that road.
I didn't start down this road. The city attorney started down this road.
I, I think what I, to clarify that is to, to bring it back.
Oh, to rewriting it?
Rewrite it, yeah.
You know, I, I understand how divisive I can be and I understand how people's juices start to flow on some of the things I say and do. That's just the way I am. What can I say? But the point is, is I think that I'm also pretty clear and that there isn't any hidden agenda with me. You know what I'm trying to do. You know what I'm going to do. I mean, I don't hold anything back. What I'm really attempting to do is what is being created downtown is fragile. It's really fragile. It, you know, most places that have a downtown like we do, it's really not a downtown. You know, it's, it prices everybody out. And so, you only have a certain segment of the population that uses it because it's too expensive for everyone else. What we're doing downtown really is a tapestry. You know, it's, it's, it's the entire community. It's affordable to everybody. The businesses that we're promoting are affordable businesses. It's designed to bring us together as a community, but it, it's the beginning of it and it's fragile. We have one shooting down there. We have one explosive event and it'll die before it started. People will be afraid to go there. And maybe I'm, I'm too sensitive, but I'm really aware of just how fragile it is. And I'm also aware, Mr. Fulbright, that your group liked it as much as everybody. Yeah, it's, it's a wonderful place and it was a wonderful place of community. And I, and as a community, we have to figure out a way to protect it. And sometimes I might be erring too, too much on the hard side of it. But I, I got to tell you, I, I, I am so in love with it that I'm afraid for it. You know, it, it, it's, it's the beginning of something that is different. And I think you guys feel that way too. I don't know how we're going to do this, but I know that we're going to do something to avoid a situation that they've successfully avoided at Thunder on the Lot. And that's really all I was trying to duplicate, is that situation. And I don't know from your facial expressions that you all disagree with that. If you do, you'll be able to tell me when we meet. The, the purpose of this ordinance, and I'm asking that we pass it tonight, is I do not want those colors of outlaw motorcycle, motorcycle, I've never been able to say that word, at those events until we figure out how we're going to do it so it's safe. After the Streets of Lancaster, within 30 days, we'll, I would like to meet with you, Mr. Fulbright and the group, and let's figure out what we can do so everybody's comfortable with it, but that everybody's safe with it. And we'll rewrite, we'll send it to Criminal Justice to rewrite. And that's the best I can do at this point. Yes, sir? I agree. I absolutely agree. I, I absolutely agree that everybody has to come together on this one. Because it has to be our rule for how we're going to live downtown, okay? And I, and I totally believe that we all want the same thing there because it is just too fun to mess up. Okay, so that's the plan. Is there a motion?
I'll move that we adopt urgency ordinance number 953. I'm in section 9.18.0110.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
That's fine. It's unanimous. Mr. Fulbright, before you leave, would you be sure to talk to the city manager and we'll get that meeting scheduled? Okay? And then I want to sit with the Criminal Justice Commission as early as, the next meeting after that meeting I have with Mr. Fulbright.
We'll schedule for the November meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do you guys want a break? Okay, let's take a break. We'll be back in 10 minutes. Okay. Everybody back? Well, obviously, after the early part of tonight's meeting, I think there's a need to, there was the Anlo Valley Human Relations Task Force or whatever they called it. Some of the stuff they did, I thought was appropriate and I thought it was in the right direction. A lot of it, I, I wasn't so sure about. I, I think that if we're really going to deal with human relations on a community-wide level, there has to be a lot more positive aspects to it than, than I saw demonstrated in the, the full commission that was before. But I also think that obviously, that if we have-
Uh, but I also think that obviously that if we had that type of commission within the city, a lot of what we dealt with at tonight's meeting could have been dealt with there and we wouldn't have been so surprised by it. Uh, because I think those are really relevant issues that, that need to be discussed, need to be explored. And so what I'm, I'm just, this is more just for, uh, your input, but also as a point of information. I've, I've appointed Sue Dell to give me the names of a group and help formulate a group that would be the equivalent of the Lancaster Human Relations Committee or whatever we want to call it, depending on there are certain laws that apply to different words we use. But the goal of it is, 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 you know, I really think the strength of this community is going to be found in, in our differences and, and our, you know, diversity is such an overused word, but, uh, you know, a tapestry is, is many colored threads with many different textures coming together to form something totally unique. And that's what I'm going to be hoping that this, this group does more than just handle individual complaints, but also I think that there has to be an outlet for groups that think they're being targeted and ways to, to get people to communicate and resolve them. Uh, but I want it to be a Lancaster group that does it. I, I don't want it to be an Antelope Valley group because I think it's a Lancaster issue. And I don't want it politicized. Quite what I'm really concerned about. I want it to be goal-oriented, working towards bringing the city of Lancaster together. And what I want to avoid is, you know, people pouring gasoline on the flames so they can come in and be the firemen later. And oftentimes I think we see that with, with these types of, of situations. Uh, so that's, that's what I'm doing. If you guys have any input, I'd be more than happy to talk about it now or later. And also anybody you think who should be on it. You know, let's, you know, I want it to be.
I think it's a great idea.
Multifaceted.
I think it's a great idea. Are, are you going to do it like a normal commission seven person?
Well, the, the, if you call it a commission, then you start having Brown Act issues and, and things like that. So I gotta talk to the city attorneys and they can tell me if I can call it a commission without being subject to the Brown Act. And if, if I can, I will. If I can't, I won't. Or do you know that off the top? No, don't tell me off the top of your head. Well, you know, and also we gotta figure out a name for it.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and maybe they'll, the group we put together will help us figure out that name. But I'm thinking seven people. I'm thinking that it'll meet very much like, like a commission. I think it'll, instead of meeting in the, uh, in the back of the room, they'll, back of, back of the hall, they'll actually have the council chambers. I think we'll give it the, the weight it deserves. Uh, which is significant. And maybe Mr. Fulbright will be on it. Okay. Moving on. Any council reports?
None.
Nothing from the Financing Authority? Nothing on the council agenda? City manager?
Um, yes, I have, um, three good news announcements. The first is the Board of Supervisor. After some good work with our staff, has approved a, a community garden north of the senior center. Mike Antonovich really went to bat for us with the Board of Supervisor. So between Lancaster West Rotary and the city and the county, we'll be putting one downtown, which is great. Um, the city won two Savvy Awards, which is the highest honor communication for the website and the Outlook Communicat, the Outlook, um, magazine. And we'll be giving that the due, um, um, the due, um, consideration it deserves at the next council meeting. Uh, they, they had released the press release. We didn't realize they were releasing it as soon as they did. And last, we had 15,000 people at the event on the boulevard. We appreciate council's attendance. Um, I, I wish it would have been covered better by the media, but that's what, it is what it is. However, I think we tend to think of 15,000 people as just a lot of people, but it's really individual stories. And if you allow me for a moment, I'll share two stories we heard today when I was walking with the mayor downtown. One was by a worker who works for TACT Electric. He's been working on the downtown job for seven months. He was telling me he's never worked so close to home in his whole life. He walks, he lives in downtown and walks to work and he's been doing that for seven months. And he said it's been an amazing experience for him and his family. And there's four or 500 people that are employed downtown. So that's a great thing, local people. The second is the owner of King Photo Supply was telling me that because of all the traffic, they've also done a great job of changing their business into an internet cafe and adding the Boulevard Today and all of that. But he is now open later on the weekends and open Sundays. That's the difference for him of being profitable and not profitable. So it didn't take a great push. It took the little push. And I think we forget sometimes those individual stories of what it does. So, um, we appreciate the partnership with council and the downtown businesses in doing something I think is great for this community and will be a legacy for a long time. So thank you.
City clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. We respectfully request that you fill out a speaker card. You'll find them on the back table. We ask that you print very clearly and concisely so that if the mayor or the council or the city staff needs to get in touch with you, they will have your information. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when you do start to speak. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you will see three lights. The green light comes on when you have, when your three minutes begin. The yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds left and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process in the meeting. State law does prohibit the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
David Abber? David Paul?
Mr. Mayor and council, hello again. You know, I've been blessed. I've been blessed by God with three things, confidence, speed and humility. And it's with that humility that I remind the council that I am here to help and I have offered to do so. Um, this is what I've been thinking. You know, I've actually ridden in the party car. You're not going to find anybody who's broken up or supervised more parties than me. Uh, I've worked with youth. I understand the family teaching model that actually helps change their behavior and, uh, kicked a lot of butt when it's called for. Now, Mr. Mayor, you need someone to get in between the city and the people and that's what I'm offering you because I have taken you on, but we still love each other, I hope, and I'm not afraid to do that. And I've stood up for these people. I've been out taking graffiti off. I've stood up for medical marijuana people at my great peril. I've called for the end of the war on drugs like LEAP does. That's just a sensible thing to keep people out of jail. So this is what I'm offering. Also, long time on the table is a program that I want to share with you. It's a economic generating item that will bring the community together and I want to share it in private before I broadcast it. You know, I'm not so afraid of people stealing the idea mainly because a lot of it has to do with me. But it's a lot of fun, what I've been doing for many, many years, programs for youth and men and, um, I would like a chance to meet and demonstrate or something like that. I, I, I talk about speed. This, uh, program that I want to do is, is about getting your frustrations out and, you know, the guys that put on their colors and ride or, or whatever it is. Everybody wants to be part of something. And when you put a sporting event that will mix the law enforcement with these other people and let them just be people together and do this very fun thing that I want to do, you're going to have a lot of benefit from that. And again, this is a sports franchise that we can market and produce worldwide. So this is a, a genuine opportunity. I'm here to help and I hope you take me up on my offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Sonia Bishop?
I'm not a biker, but I do ride a bike. Hello, I'm Sonia Suh Bishop. I'm a senior that lives in one of these crime-infested hut housing. I'm out here and I've outlived my father by 10 years of the same disease. I am forced because of my low income to live in these housings. I am here to ask this committee why I, as a senior citizen, have to live with this crime. Our crime is from within our building and it starts with our corrupt managers. They're called the TOPA company. And then it goes on to the owners. We have drug dealers that have the keys to our secure doors. And I've got little 80-year-old people asking me why. There's people so scared that last week when an 80-year-old heard a window break at 12 or 2 o'clock in the morning, I said, "What did you do?" She said, "I covered up my head with the blankets and waited until it got light." I have fought another fight in this town. I, this is the third building I've lived in. I lived in a rural village was the first one where the corruption, they had those seniors so scared that they had them believing that the security cameras were watching them and listening to them. You'd walk in and say hi and then go, "Oh, no, 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 no." Because what they use with us low-income seniors that are in this income trap is the threat of eviction. Then I was illegally put out there and I won't hold you personally, but I went to your office for help and was refused. But I learned from, I, I was told by one of the finest in town after a 30-day notice that if I didn't leave, I'd be escorted to the sidewalk. I said, "Sir, do you have a mother? Do you know what it's like to be, live in these places where they terrorize the seniors from within?" He goes, "I take care of my mother." So I moved, but you know, experience is knowledge. And I'm here to ask for help. We can't do it alone. And why must I fight these fights and be an advocate for others without the help of Lancaster? If you want to do away with crime, you start in these buildings and you help us. We've called ever agency and all we're given is the runaround. The runaround, the runaround. Nothing is ever done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Drico, would you? Thank you. Ms. Bishop, uh, Mr. Drico will meet with you. Okay. Uh, Jim Greenleaf?
He left.
Clarence McGee? David Ehrlich?
I admit when I'm wrong and, uh, I've, I've made a mistake that I have to actually cop to as far as, uh, it was in the paper today, actually. Um, anybody read War for 10 Things He Hates? Anybody read that?
Missed it this morning.
Oh, I'm sorry, six. Okay, I'm, I'm going to take claim for number one, okay? It's not his fault. I'm the one who wrote that, okay? And I, and I think I did miss the spell check, but, um, and, and, and as soon as Steve finds out, I'm probably, you know, not going to be working. No, I'm kidding. Uh, but my, my point is, that's, it seems trivial. I guess the, the, the press is here, but I just want to say that, that was my fault. I made, I made the mistake. But let's talk about the real issues, um, in that, in that situation. Another thing, um, I, I want to, um, I want to say that we all are adults here and we all act like adults and, and I lost my, 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 I lost emotions with you when I heard you say something. You might want to, might want to just go over that video because that, that, that killed me. I have a, uh, there's a, in, I, down in South Los Angeles, I, I don't remember the district it was. There's a, uh, a buddy, buddy of mine who actually ran for Republican Central Committee. And the funny thing was is that he, uh, he was, he was a, an underdog and, and he, he's, he wasn't whining or anything, but he realized, uh, after looking at some finance statements that, uh, this, this, one of his running, one of the contenders actually got a, a donation from the Central Committee for like $4,500. And, and you look back, the Central Committee paid, paid the $4,500 right back to the chairman of the Central Committee. And, and, and we all sit here and act like adults. I just hope we can get past stuff like that because I know it's, 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 I don't know. I, I'm, I'm, I'm just venting a little bit now. I just hope that, uh, we can all get past the, the childish games. I mean, it seems like childish games to me and, and let some other people in, into the, into the world so they, so we don't have to worry about going into tyranny. We don't have to worry about looking at, at people and saying, uh, "Well, there's your power structure." Uh, there's a lot of good people out here and there's, this, I, I hope there's still opportunity for this, uh, this community. It looks like there, there possibly is. And, uh, I just, I hope to be a part of it someday. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Andrew Nieto? Andrew, how do you say your last name? I, I see you on the blogs and I cannot.
Nieto.
Nieto.
It's Spanish for grandson.
Okay.
Well, there was, uh, some mention of the Constitution earlier in the meeting, so.
Knew I shouldn't have done that.
Um, I want you guys to know I'm not criticizing anybody. I just want to point out some, some of the, um, text in the Constitution. In terms of the Constitution being a fluid or a stone document, there was a Supreme Court case in the early 1800s in which it was determined that the Supreme Court had the authority to interpret the Constitution. Prior to that time, it was commonly understood that the role of the Supreme Court was to interpret only the laws against the standard of the Constitution. And I decided to take a look and I, section three, article three, actually. Um, executive, or article four. How are there two article threes in here? Must be a typo. Um, so, section two of the article that defines the judicial branch of the United States government. "The judicial power shall extend to all cases in law and equity arising under this Constitution, the laws of the United States and treaties made or which shall be made under their authority, to all cases affecting ambassador, other public ministers and consuls, to all cases of admiralty and marine jurisdiction, to controversies to which the United States shall be a party, to controversies between two or more states or between a state and citizens of its state." Between citizens and, I'll go ahead and stop reading there. Looked a little bit ahead. That's all, all that's relevant to what I'm saying. Um, I noticed there that in terms of the actual definition of the Supreme Court, its authority pertains to cases in law and equity arising under the Constitution. So as I read that, I see that that means that the Supreme Court's job is, as it was originally understood, to interpret the laws against the standard of the Constitution. So the Constitution is a stone document. And the authority of the Supreme Court under the Constitution is to interpret the laws, not the Constitution itself. Uh, my time is growing limited, so I'll refrain from further comments and I thank you for your time.
You know, books have been written on that.
I'm, I'm, I'm a simplest, if you will. I stick to the original document. Thank you.
Thank you. Gina Knight? Stan Mohammed? Okay, we're now going to recess to close session for the following matters. Conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, Palmdale et al. versus Lancaster. And conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, Engineered Pipeline versus Lancaster. So. Okay, let's reconvene.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the, uh, city council met in closed session under Government Code Section 54956.9A. Government Code Section 54956.9A concerning a case of Palmdale versus Lancaster, gave direction to counsel on the handling of that, that matter. Second issue was under, also under 54956.9A, Engineered Pipeline Inc. versus Lancaster, and approved a settlement of that case in the amount of $2,400,000. And we will be bringing back future actions for you to appropriate the necessary money, et cetera.
Thank you. Okay, we're adjourned until Tuesday, October 12, 2010, at 5:00 p.m. Carol, heat up the dinner. I'm coming home. Please.